Senator Tony Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Esposito, Senator Agun, Senator Titegri, Senator Guthertz. Perfect, we do have ten. Senators, we are going to presume. I mean, at the end of the legislature in Guam is called to order. I recognize the majority leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we adopt the session agenda dated December twenty first, two thousand and ten. It's been prepared and copies have been made and been passed out to every member.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. I would like to start out with the prayer. If Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, you can lead us in prayer.
I can have my colleagues stand up and join me, please. In the name of the Father, of the Son, of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, as we gather here as Guam's policymaking body on this last session for the thirtieth Guam Legislature, we have very many things to be thankful for and first of all, it's the blessings that you continue to bestow us so that we, as policymakers, may continue to put our people's interests first and not special interests. But Heavenly Father, during these holiday seasons and this Christmas holiday, it is very important to know that it is through you that we will continue to do your work, do your will, and know that the bills that we have on the agenda today, Heavenly Father, that our policymakers will deliberate and make sure that the decisions that are made today, that it would be the best of their ability and for our people of Guam. Heavenly Father, we also ask you that you take care of our armed forces, members, family members who are not here. May you keep them and protect them from harm's way, especially during this Christmas season, and that, Heavenly Father, we thank you for your continued blessings on each and every one of us as we celebrate your Christmas season. With this, we pray in your name, amen.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator Palacios, can you please join us in reciting the inifresi?
Inifresi. Gineni ma stat kilu gi hinasoku, yama stat kalam gi korasonku, geni ma sfigu na hinasoku. Hinashina hupe shen maistadzu, paraba ihu protehi, zanu defendi, ihinengi, iku tura, ilingwahi, iairi, ihanum zanitano chamoru, ni irinshoku diritsu geni na zu stata, esti wa fidma gi hilui biblia, zanipandirahu ibandiran Guam.
I'd like to ask Senator Titegri if you can please lead us in the Guam hymn, and after that, Senator Tony Ada, if you can lead us in the national anthem.
Parayi ora, parayi gloria, aviva iis la sen para. Chodu i tempu i pas, parayita, zan geni di langen da vendi shon. Contrabili gu, na fan sapu ham, duus protegi is lan Guam. Contrabili gu, na fan sapu ham, duus protegi is lan Guam. Oh, say, can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? Oh, the red hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. Ask the clerk to please take roll. Senator Tom Ada.
Here.
Senator Tony Ada.
Present.
Senator Agun. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo.
There.
Senator Cruz. Senator Espaudon. Senator Guthertz.
President.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Daya.
Senator Palacios.
Daya.
Senator Penglinen. Senator Penglinen. Senator Penglinen.
Here.
Senator Esposito.
Here.
Senator Titegri.
Present.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wambit.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quarrel.
Thank you very much. Senator Esposito, you're recognized for the approval of the Legislative Journal.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated November twenty second through November thirty, two thousand and ten, subject to corrections.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from the Imago La in Guam, and I move for the same.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, thank you. There are reports of standing committees, and I move that these reports be also appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees.
Introduction and first reading of bills.
And thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that bill numbers four ninety-eight dash thirty COR to bill numbers five oh two dash thirty COR be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that Resolution number three eight eight dash thirty to Resolution four nine four dash thirty be also given its first reading.
On that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I requested you recognize some members to attempt any overrides at this point.
Okay, so are there any members? We are on motions? On any vetoed bills?
Yeah. You're passing it out.
So Senator Palacios, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the veto of the Governor by Bill four sixty-six, I would like to make a motion to consider that for an override and base it on the voting file.
On that motion, are there any objections? No, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Senator Palacios. We're still in motions on any other vetoed bills. Number fourteen, is that what? Do you have? Do you have? Did you get your, or the bills, or so?
I move that notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, vetoed bill number four thirty-eight dash thirty COR substituted by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement Land, and amended on the floor, be placed in the voting file for the purpose of an override, and I'd like to speak briefly on the bill.
Okay, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm hoping that my colleagues will continue to lend their support and consideration favorably, that is, on this passage of veto of Bill four thirty-eight through a override of the Governor's veto. The bill received unanimous support. It does something pretty simple, I think, that marches us towards accomplishing what everybody always advocates, that's more transparency and more openness. And one of the areas in the finances of the government that hasn't been transparent and hasn't been open in the past is the issue of Section thirty money, and how is it requested, and how is it remitted to the government of Guam, and how do we come up with the amount to request to the Department of Interior and the IRS for a cover-over amount? As you know, Section thirty money is monies of the withholding taxes of federal employees, both military and civilian, as well as retirees who live on Guam and make Guam their home or are stationed here by virtue of their assignment. And this money, by virtue of the Organic Act, Section thirty of it, that's why it's called Section thirty cover-overs, is remitted to the government of Guam for the purpose of funding the operations of the government of Guam. In the past, I don't think anybody has really, from the legislative side, has delved into how do we estimate this, and are we doing it so that we both understand what we are asking for, how we're gonna get it, and what the consequences are of the estimates that we give. When I first took over the Committee on Appropriations, Madam Speaker, it was one of the issues that we looked at because it was, the Legislature was actually in the dark. How did they estimate it? How did they reconcile it? And so forth. And one of the things, we were so much in the dark, that even the past Appropriations Chairman of this body, Madam Speaker, did not know that the Governor overestimated Section thirty by twenty million dollars. And they just went ahead and appropriated the money, and not only did they not know that it was an overestimation, they did not know that we had to pay that back through an adjustment in later years. Not only did they not know the first time, they did not know the second time. And really, it was when I took over and we started to try and categorize all of the revenue streams and understand how they flow into the government coffers, did we discover these facts, and we discover the process of doing this. And that it is necessary, I believe, for the purpose of greater accuracy in developing budgets, that we know what we're doing, what the Governor's doing, and how much we're requesting. And so the bill basically says that the Governor will share that information with the Legislature when he sends forward the documents that accompany his request for the cover-over amounts. And that that information is not just shared with the Legislature, Madam Speaker, that that information is shared through the Special Economic Service Group, the Special Accounting Service Group, and more importantly, the rest of this body by virtue of their participation during the budget process. It has not happened before, and we have had to, we were able to do this and work together cooperatively in terms of finding out the information, and now we just want to make it standard practice that that information is shared. And so the purpose of Bill four thirty-eight would be to ensure that those information is shared with the Legislature and the other individuals and organizations working on the government finance and the government budget process. And so it is in keeping with, I think, what I've heard in the budget, I mean, in the campaign of transparency and openness, that everybody wants to bring to the new term, whether they're be sitting in Adalup or sitting in this hallway and in this floor of the Legislature. And so this would just make that standard practice by law. It really puzzled me that the Governor vetoed the bill because I don't understand, most importantly, he says that, as previously stated, the information is available to his legislature in Guam except as otherwise protected by law. It's not available. He doesn't make the information that he has, that he develops with his financial team, available. It's not normally available. It wasn't in the past, or maybe nobody just had an interest in it, but we certainly did, and we want to make it standard practice that that's available. And so in that respect, I think the bill does that, and I think it's necessary. One of the rationale the Governor uses, you can get the information if you decide to FOIA me. No, that's exactly why we need a bill like this, because we don't want to resort to that. We don't want to have to FOIA or request through the Freedom of Information Act this kind of what should be readily available and readily shared documents between, and communications between the Department of Interior and, of course, the IRS and Department of Revenue and Taxation during the development of the government estimates and revenue estimates for the upcoming budget. And so, Madam Speaker, I'm asking my colleagues, as I started earlier, for their continued favorable consideration of Bill four thirty-eight. They graciously, everyone graciously supported this bill on its initial passage, and I'm asking for that same consideration in the vote for the override of the Governor's veto. And so I want to thank you and thank my colleagues for their consideration. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, notwithstanding the Governor's veto, okay, Senator Agun, you are recognized.
Buenos dias, Madam Speakers, and todui senorono mangai gi geni, dan todui emplea no matotsu geni gi legislature in Guam. Buenos, and, Madam Speaker, I want to also stand in support of the override of Bill four thirty-eight. And you know, it's based on the idea of transparency and making sure that all of this information is readily available. I think that if you take a look at some of the provisions contained in this legislation in terms of the legislative findings and intent, it's self-explanatory. If, in fact, we're gonna propose a budget from this legislative body as a policymaking body, we're gonna anticipate revenues infinitum or over the course of next five to ten years, the reality is, is that there's got to be openness and transparency between not only the executive branch, but most importantly, in this body. This body, every single year, is questioned about the sense of priority as it applies to education, public safety, and healthcare. But you know, Madam Speaker, when you look at what this body has had to work with, and then you find out that in certain circumstances there have been over-assessments, and then we've had to pay that particular amount from Section thirty funds because it was over, the revenues were granted upfront, then it makes it even more difficult to be able to plan the budgeting process forward. And I think that as we look ahead, and we just recently went through committing Section thirty revenues in two thousand and nine to borrow over four hundred million dollars for this community to try to take care of some of the issues. We also have been discussing other concerns, such as the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse in terms of finding fifteen point two million dollars. We've also discussed general concerns about our public hospital, GMH, having to extend, perhaps, to construct an entire wing, fifty rooms, a minimum of fifty rooms to accommodate women and also to accommodate our children. Madam Speaker, this is in light of what the requirements are today, and we're not talking about the military buildup to accommodate the military buildup, we're specifically talking about accommodating the needs of our people and our community today so that as we progress and we move forward, that the issues with the military buildup, hopefully, we'll be able to get some additional resources from the federal government to support the local community. But all this is asking is that all the parties, inclusive of representatives of the Legislature, be privy to information in terms of what's gonna be requested out of Section thirty revenues, how that overall accounting is tabulated so that there's a general understanding that regardless as to what the circumstances are and what the amount is gonna be requested, that members of the Legislature and also, in particular, the Chair of the Finance Committee in conjunction with representatives of the executive branch are on the same page in terms of exactly where Section thirty funds are originating from, how they're being calculated, and what this community can anticipate over the course of the subsequent fiscal year as the budget is formulated. So, Madam Speaker, I really don't see any major issues with regards to this legislation other than making sure that any action or any decision or any request for reimbursements from Section thirty revenues, that that particular information is mutually shared between the executive branch and the legislative branch, and I think that that's only appropriate. Thank you very much, and ceseus masi, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Agun. On the motion, Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support that we override the Governor's veto of Bill four thirty-eight, and I hope that our colleagues really look at the veto message and make that be a reason to want to override this vetoed bill. The Governor says that these documents can be requested, that are being requested in Bill four thirty-eight are already available through the Sunshine Reform Act of nineteen ninety-nine. I mean, that in and of itself, Madam Speaker, should motivate us to want to override this vetoed bill so that we can put in statute something that should be automatic. You know, the law also requires that people come to the Legislature to testify on any matter, really, they should be telling us the truth. But it took this Legislature to pass a law to say that anyone testifying regarding financial matters, testifying to the Legislature must do so under oath. You know, why do we have to do that? Because they weren't forthcoming. Why did the good author of this bill have to do something like this? Because this current administration was not forthcoming. Not forthcoming in letting us know what these Section thirty remittances are, not forthcoming in letting us know that they've been over-projecting, and in subsequent fiscal years we've had to pay this money back. Now, I want to further rise to support this override and ask our colleagues to do so because it builds upon the basic tenants of what the Special Accounting Services and Special Economic Services Groups are supposed to do. It's supposed to provide a representation from both the executive and legislative branches of government so they can be, have one, so they can have one concerted effort and be on the same page in addressing the budgetary needs for the upcoming fiscal year for the government of Guam. Plainly put, Madam Speaker, for the Governor to veto this bill and to simply say, you know, Senators, that document you're requesting for in this bill, you can just FOIA me. Now, I ask Governor and the current administration, the outgoing administration, why he would go through great lengths to keep all of this information in hiding and to keep everything in secret and to go against a very bill that purports to be, to provide an open and transparent process and not have to have us refer to another law that provides for this very same open and transparent process by way of the Sunshine Reform Act. We also know, Madam Speaker, that in the Sunshine Reform Act, you can FOIA any government of Guam official for any document that's of a public nature, that should be open to the public, but these directors don't always comply with the Sunshine Reform Act. They don't. They have so many, certain number of days, when the time is up, they ask for an extension. If we were gonna go through this process, it could be another bureaucratic means to preventing the Legislature from obtaining this much critical information as we prepare the upcoming budgets for the fiscal year. So I rise in support of the override. I hope that we can override this veto, and I hope that in the next Legislature and with the incoming administration, that we don't have to go through great lengths to ask for the very documents that we need in order for us to make these decisions in this very deliberative process. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Esposito, on the motion. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, so on, Senator, you would like to close? Okay, so on the motion, then, notwithstanding the Governor's objection, on Bill four thirty-eight to be sent down to the voting file, there being no objections, so ordered. Senator Penglinen, so you have another motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, the vetoed bill number one one seven COR, an act to establish program procurement guidelines and procedures relative to contractual requirements of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand and nine, be placed in the voting file for the purpose of an override. I'd like to speak briefly on the bill.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill one one seven was a bill that was introduced early on, passed by this body early on when we first started receiving announcements of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act appropriations that had passed through Congress, and the states and territories began receiving the grant awards. And as you and everyone else clearly recall, Madam Speaker, these grant awards had a timeline that was strict and constricted. We had to obligate the funds within a certain period of time, we had to expend, begin expending the funds. And so, given that there was a large amount of money coming and different departments and agencies were getting the grant, but they were all basically coming to the government of Guam and funneled through the office of the Governor, and then he, in accordance with the enabling statutes in Congress, would allocate the funds to the different departments and agencies. And one of my concerns early on, which has even been magnified today, is that these funds continue to be anemic with regards to how this government is obligating these funds and spending the funds. As an example, Madam Speaker, we know that our neighbor, the CNMI, got funding for Edg... we know that our neighbor, the CNMI, got funding for education under ARA. And I saw almost maybe five, six months ago that one of the programs that we are both implementing, both the CNMI and Guam, is the purchase of laptops for students. The CNMI has already purchased the laptop and distributed them out to the students. On Guam, we're still planning to do it. We're still working through the process of doing our procurement. We're seeing some projects that are going to be construction-related. And as such, you not only have to, of course, award the project, but you got to design the project, you got to hire your consultants, et cetera, et cetera. And all of these, in my opinion, need some greater coordination and somebody with power at the highest levels of this government. And that was the concept behind forming this and placing this entity and the responsibilities at no higher place than at Adalup itself. And so, we had proposed that the Lieutenant Governor be in charge of coordinating this upon the delegation by the governor. So, we're not taking any power and vesting them with the Lieutenant Governor outside of recognizing that it is the governor that is still in charge and the Lieutenant Governor is a team partner and works with the governor at the direction of the governor. So, we recognize that. And we are kind of almost doing exactly what the White House is doing with regards to ARA funds. If you know that, and follow the expenditure and the obligation of these ARA funds, even the accounting of the ARA funds, the president has delegated that authority and to bird-dog these funds and grants to the Vice President. So, it is Vice President Biden that meets periodically, goes out to the communities, meets with the communities in terms of getting the funds out there, getting them spent, and getting them accounted for. And so, this bill kind of does the same thing for the Guam funds that have been awarded to us. And it would have the governor, of course, recognizing his authority, but delegating his powers then to the Lieutenant Governor, working through him and his direction, to coordinate all of the departments and agencies that are recipients of these grants and that have a role in approving and expediting grants, grant awards, and accounting for these grants. It is, and so, what this does, Madam Speaker, is sets up that office within the office of the governor, attended to by the Lieutenant Governor, to be in charge of the coordination and carrying out the duties and the vision assigned to him by the governor, of course. But it would present somebody at the very top of this government that can move these directors, that can move the resources to put them where they're needed, to expedite the expenditure of these funds. And if we don't do something, Madam Speaker, to bring some greater coordination, greater authority in terms of directing action and requiring action, we're going to find ourselves in a very, very precarious situation with regards to these grants, the expenditures of these grants, and the accounting of these grants. So, again, we're kind of doing what the White House has done with regards to the ARA stimulus program of putting the day-to-day coordination and movement of the projects and the programs in the Vice President's office. We're putting this under the governor's office for the coordination. But without a doubt, we know, and the governor, as well as the president, continues to retain their authority and their powers over, of course, the Vice President, and in this case, the Lieutenant Governor. So, I'm hoping that there'll be consideration for this so that we can, as I say, make sure we coordinate and we expedite the expenditure of these funds. Otherwise, we're going to lose some of these funds, Madam Speaker, which is what I'm afraid of. And so, I think that this type of coordination is vital and needed, especially with the looming deadlines that are coming up in September of next year. So, I ask my colleagues again for their consideration of this request for their support in the override of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Ada, you're recognized, and then Senator Guthriez.
Madam Speaker, I certainly agree that there needs to be a much more coordinated and assertive effort insofar as getting these ARA funds expended and moving along so that we don't lose it. If I may, though, inquire from the author of the bill, I'm just a little confused as to why we, as the legislature, is now saying, "Lieutenant Governor, here is your responsibilities, here is your role." And why do we not then just leave that to the governor, at least, and express where our concerns are, and let the governor decide the kind of role that his Lieutenant Governor is going to assume? But it appears that what we may be doing here is we are driving a wedge between the governor and the Lieutenant Governor because on the one hand, we're telling the Lieutenant Governor through this mandate what it is that we want him to do, and the governor may have different plans for that Lieutenant Governor. For all we know, the Lieutenant Governor could dub, I mean, the governor could dub the BBMR director who has her oversight and control of all the numbers and the dollars going in and out of this government, the same as with the Department of Administration. I'm just a little concerned about now when we start getting into the governor's office and starting to tell him how his assistant is going to, what role he's going to play. So, I just really would ask the author of the bill, if he can maybe kind of shed some light on that as to what the thinking is. Because in my mind, just at first glance, this bill definitely drives a wedge between the governor and the Lieutenant Governor because the Lieutenant Governor is going to have to now then comply with the law. And, you know, Governor, the law says I must do this regardless of what you want. So, maybe if he can help me understand if he'll yield and just, just help me to understand that this is not that wedge that I see it to be.
Senator Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
I will, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it is not my intent to drive a wedge. And I think what I was looking at was, how is, how are other jurisdictions handling this? And in this case, you know, okay, the Lieutenant Governor's duty is beautification. That's what's in statute, you know? So, maybe he's just not that busy and he can, he'd appreciate extra work. I don't know. But again, Madam Speaker, what we looked at was how is the administration in the federal government, which awards this money, looking at structuring the reporting mechanisms for accounting of the money and getting the money flowing? And the need to provide somebody at the very top that can motivate and command these directors. And the governor, I didn't want to tell him what to do. I don't want to tell the Lieutenant Governor what to do, but somebody's got to do this. And maybe it's, maybe it's not going to be a problem in the incoming administration, and so, this may not be a problem because they're going to do it anyway. And if that's the case, then what does it hurt that we said it? It's to provide a focus and the resource to the expenditure of these funds, other than telling what the governor, than telling the governor what to do. I guess maybe I just feel a little bit more comfortable in terms of duplicating the kind of structure that I saw in the White House and in the president in terms of handling the ARA funds and dividing the responsibilities. And I thought that it could work here, and I think it can work here. And I think that the gentlemen that are going into office, you know, they're a team, they're going to work together. And so, if that's the case, then this wouldn't hurt. If that's not the case, then it still wouldn't hurt because we still recognize the governor's powers and the assignment of that. So, it's a little bit, again, maybe it is a little intrusive, but we need to do something. We need to provide, again, a focused approach to this. And this is my contribution and thoughts to that process after looking at what's been happening on the federal side. And, you know, I think it can work on Guam, and we need to. Because if we don't do anything, Madam Speaker, these ARA funds have to be reported for each individual project over a certain amount. So, if it's a $50,000 award, it's got to be reported, accounted for, awarded, and all of that. And again, it's to find somebody with enough clout in the administration to bring everybody together and get everybody to act. And so, that's what I saw was happening elsewhere. And I thought that that was a system that could be beneficial to how we can handle these ARA grants on Guam.
Thank you, yes, Senator Panglinen. Senator Ada, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I certainly appreciate the gentleman's effort to try and shed light on just what his thinking was. And admittedly, I must say that I'm just not convinced. I still say that this bill, if we override this veto, we're in essence mandating a wedge between the governor and the Lieutenant Governor. I feel that there's actually other ways that we may be able to still, as a legislative body, be able to maintain an oversight on this. And this is where the committee chairmen, chairpersons, really come into play. They have their oversights, and it's really incumbent upon them to aggressively sit down with their oversight organizations and sit down and have that frequent dialogue as to what's happening, how it's coming along, and not just wait until we start getting notices of expirations coming up within a period that doesn't give us enough time to recover. So, I really, I have great concerns about, basically, a bill that would, in essence, mandate the Lieutenant Governor, who really should be getting his marching orders from the governor to, as to what the role is that he's going to play. I say leave that to the governor. At the end of the day, whatever happens or does not happen, it's really placed, that burden is placed on the governor. And if the ARA funds result in a lapsing and we lose it, then the governor is the one that has to answer that and certainly don't want to do anything that will take him off the hook. So, I just, that's my position on this, Madam Speaker. And I certainly would not, could not, would not be able to support an override of this veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tom. I have, the speaker's not here. Senator Guthriez, I'll recognize you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I support the override, and let me tell you why. I'm not interested in a power play between a governor or lieutenant governor. I'm interested in seeing that this money is spent the way it is intended to be spent, as quickly as possible, so we do not lose these funds. Now, I think we're about to see a change in the administration. At this moment, we have a governor-elect and lieutenant governor that are supposed to take office, if nothing happens before then. January 3rd. January 3rd, Madam Speaker. And we're talking about millions of dollars sitting in department and agency accounts provided by the federal government for specific projects that have not been spent. While this community is suffering economically, while we have contractors out there that would love to bid for these projects, and we have infrastructure needs that are not being addressed, I'm going to say the Department of Education does not have the capacity or the resources to properly utilize the ARA funds in a timely fashion. And they have admitted that. They have hired consulting groups left and right to tell them what they need to do with the money. They have wasted time, Madam Speaker. I'm serious, they've wasted time. Yes, and money, hiring firms to tell them what we already know because we know what the infrastructure needs at DOE. DOE has had a master plan for physical improvements for 10 years. Now, let's knock this off, and let's do this job now. I trust Ray Tenorio to do this job. I trust Eddie Calvo to get this job done. They are partners. Ray is accountable to the governor. The governor is accountable to the people of Guam. We have a responsibility for oversight. I agree with Senator Ada. But we cannot fiddle around anymore. Let's get these projects moving. Let's have a coordinated office, a center responsible for ensuring compliance with the federal requirements, compliance with Guam law. Let's get these bid specs out. Let's get these projects moving, let's get the construction going, let's get jobs created and opportunities for our community because of these funds. It would be a terrible, terrible thing for us to not use these funds in a timely manner and see them sent back to the federal government. And don't kid yourself, they're watching us. They're watching how we're going to use these funds and if we're going to adhere to the federal requirements in using these funds. You know, sometimes, government agencies need a kick in the fanny to move things along. We're trying to help them, we're not trying to take power from them or from anybody else. What we're trying to do is protect the overall interests of the people of Guam to make sure these projects get off the ground and they are realized. We asked for this money. We wrote applications for this money. We have an obligation to use these funds the way they're intended and approved for and stop the delays. We must admit that certain departments of this government do not have the capacity to contract out these projects in a timely manner. And more than that, they do not have the capacity to ensure quality control once the projects are issued. And that's another headache we have to address. How do we make sure these millions of dollars in ARA money for infrastructure improvements, whether it's for DOE or roads or highways or anything else, is properly overseen? Because I'll tell you, Madam Speaker, in the past, when we've had an influx of funds, whether it's locally generated money that we've dedicated for our school system, for improvements in the fiscal plans, or for other projects, whether it's federal money, we don't have quality control. I'm sorry. And the people of Guam get gypped, and the American taxpayers get gypped, and we don't have quality control. So, I'm looking to the governor's office, to the Lieutenant Governor's office, to not only move these projects forward in a timely manner, but to ensure there's quality control so we get the maximum benefit from the use of those funds. So, I stand up in full support of this override. I'm very disappointed in the current governor for vetoing this bill. What the heck was he thinking of? This could be part of his legacy, ensuring that these ARA projects are accomplished in a timely manner. And he has the power to do it. Hasn't been aggressive on this. And that's why this legislature stepped in with this bill. So, I stand in support of this override, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry we have to do this, but let's get these projects moving. I'm sorry we have to do this, but let's get these projects moving. Let's create economic opportunities for people here, and let's ensure we get this infrastructure that's so critically needed in place. Thank you.
Sidhu Smasi, Senator Guthert. Speaker Wampat, I will recognize you in the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. After I heard that from the other Judy, I was thinking that maybe I shouldn't even bother speaking. But Madam Speaker, I do rise for the override. And of course, I support everything that Senator Guthert stated. So it's ditto, ditto, ditto to everything that she stated. Madam Speaker, the reason why that I also support the override, and we all know, of course, what the responsibilities are and duties of the lieutenant governor, and they are the keeper of the seal, in charge of beautification projects on the island. And if we recall, years ago, and you know, Senator Pangolino had introduced this legislation with that, and its law, is that also it's the Grants Office. And being grants, when you think of grants, these are federal grants, we're not talking about local grants at all. So therefore, the Ara funding, which is a federal grant, actually dovetails exactly what it is that the lieutenant governor is tasked to do. And there hasn't been any problem with that Grants Office. I think that was passed in the 26th Guam Legislature, and here we are in the 30th Guam Legislature, and there's been, never been a problem between the governor and the lieutenant governor when it came to these grant monies that the lieutenant governor's office is now the Grants Office Center, so to speak. I think this will be a welcome duty and responsibility for the lieutenant governor. I really also believe, Madam Speaker, that the old days of politics really is gone. We're talking about two young individuals who, you know, are progressive. They definitely have campaigned, you know, together as a team. They've demonstrated that, you know, they're able to work together. I know that the governor-elect has indicated, of course, through his transition team, is that they have a major task ahead of them with their calculation of some shortfalls for the entire government of Guam. And the one thing that we need to realize here is that when we make any type of mistakes about these Ara monies, is that the government is going to be held liable. We would have to end up having to pay back for any errors that we've made. And it's important that we get the best and the brightest that's going to be in these Grants Office, who'll be able then to know what the requirements are, the rules and the regulations, and more important is to make sure that we don't make these errors so that we don't have to refund, you know, any of these federal dollars, because we surely can't afford it. And it has, and by placing it in that office, is that it guarantees transparency, guarantees accountability, there are individuals definitely responsible for it, and the buck stops with that individual. So the buck is gonna stop with the lieutenant governor, and therefore, he's gonna have to take, you know, his responsibility very seriously. So with just that, you know, other than what my other colleagues have indicated, the most important thing here for me that, you know, to support this is the fact that already through legislation, we have added an additional responsibility to the lieutenant governor, and that's the Grants Office. And Ara monies are also federal grants. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Juan Pavez, Speaker Wampat. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Speaker Pangolino, you can close.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I certainly want to thank my colleagues for giving their insight on the matter of the question for the override. You know, again, Madam Speaker, maybe it's because we've got some new people going in. I think it's even better that we've got new people going in rather than two existing people. Because, you know, they're fresh, they're new, they're eager, they're still a honeymoon. So if that is the case, which I believe it is, the honeymoon will last a long time, then we don't have to worry about the wedge. You know, wedges usually don't happen during honeymoons. They happen, you know, after five or six years of marriage. And so, I think that these two will do fine, and that this will not be a wedge. It is this issue of, there's gotta be some certain sense of urgency on these Ara funds. We have kinda like just shoved it out there and just kinda let it go. And from a legislative body, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at one of the issues that we looked at from the economic perspective, as well as the budgeting perspective of this government, is that we made some assumptions, very little assumptions, because we learned our lesson from last time, but we made some assumptions on what the revenues that will come and flow into the government coffers for expenditure and to support government operations by the expenditure of these funds, and it's just not happening as quickly as we think. Even considering how conservative we went on the expenditure of these Ara grants, if we don't spend it, we're going to have some trouble meeting revenue projections for, and by accounting for the expenditures of these funds in the timelines that it should be all out there flowing right now. But we haven't even turned a spigot on a lot of these things. And we're already one quarter of the way through this budget cycle. December will be the first quarter, and we haven't even opened a spigot for these projects so that it can begin to be spent out in our community and generate economic activity, generate government resources and revenues to support government operations. So we've gotta do something, Madam Speaker. And the issue that, oh, we have our own oversight, that we can do it as a legislature, Madam Speaker, the only reason why we're getting a lot of action on these, for example, on the construction projects that's happening, that's just turning upside down the business operations in our communities, is because we had oversight on the oversiders. We had members of this body saying, hey, what's happening out there? And then we jumped. So maybe that's what is needed. Maybe we need the lieutenant governor, the office of the governor to say, hey, what's happening? Everybody get in this room. Everybody bring your files. Everybody, let's get together and begin assessing where we're at, where we wanna go, what we need to do to get there. I just don't see it happening, Madam Speaker. And unless we focus, and, yeah, maybe it's a focus that's being mandated, but yes, we need to focus. The incoming administration needs to focus. They just told everybody to stop spending. I don't think they meant stop spending Ara grants. But that's what seems to be happening. We're kinda like stuck, and we stopped spending Ara grants. We haven't let those projects out. And when we've let them out, they're not to the point where it's the part of the project and the expenditure that generates greater multiplier effect in our community with regards to the economic activity. We're not in the construction phase. We're barely in the design phase. We're barely in the RFP phases for these things. And if we don't do something, we're not only going to suffer the consequences of not spending these funds, we're gonna suffer the consequences of not having the revenue stream to support government operations when it is almost sinful, because we have the money to spend. We have the cash. We don't have to go look for it. It's sitting in a bank, and we have to focus our resources. You know, my good colleague who spoke earlier and said that, you know, this might be a wedge and so forth, I don't know. Maybe it's because it's these two new guys. But my good colleague voted yes on this bill when we originally had it before this body, that it was good, that we needed that focus, that we needed something. But maybe because the players have changed, he feels that maybe Ray and Eddie wouldn't be able to get along, and this would be driven. Or maybe Eddie just doesn't need the help of us trying to advise him and focus him with regards to this legislation. But again, Madam Speaker, my intention and my desire in offering this is to put some greater structure and greater urgency with regards to the accounting of these federal grants and federal funds, the coordination of all the resources of this government needed to effectuate and implement the expenditure plan and programs, and to account for it in a body that has and is willing to focus on this thing and move forward. Before I moved on this override, Madam Speaker, I asked the incoming lieutenant governor, is this something that would be desirable? Is this something that he would, could work with, with his partner? And I think he made the motion to override the last time. And I said, whoa, 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 wait a minute. So from that reaction, I think they've discussed it, and maybe they think, hey, it's, we're gonna do it, maybe regardless of whether this bill is not, and the fact that it's there is even greater assurances that we have the legislature's cooperation and commitment to help us move forward on the expenditure of these grants and providing the resources and the coordination. So in that respect, and in that regard, I think that that is the reaction I got when I just briefly discussed the idea of, what do you think if I made this motion to move forward? And the reaction was positive. So it wasn't in a total vacuum and that, oh, you know, I'm trying to provide opportunity for wedges to be driven. I think I'm providing opportunities where goals can be shared, responsibilities can be delegated, and work can be coordinated to ensure that we spend these Ara funds, we generate the economic activity, we generate the government revenues resulting from that economic activity, and we continue to support the people that depend on this government for the services that it provides. So I hope that we'll continue to get continued consideration on this matter, and that when the vote comes, I'm asking for favorable consideration. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Pangolino. So on the motion, notwithstanding the objections of the governor, to send Bill 117, vetoed Bill 117, to the voting file without any objections. And so, Senator Esposito, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of veto of Bill 372, the sponsor is arriving tonight. As we know, he's still a father attending to his very ill mom. And so, I move, notwithstanding the actions of Imegalain Guahan on the matter of veto of Bill 372-30, an act to amend Section 13201B of Article 2, Chapter 13, Title 19 of GCA, relative to the reporting of suspected child abuse or neglect by clergy personnel of churches other than religious organizations, I move that this be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
On that motion, does anyone who would like to speak? Senator, if you may.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my understanding is that the author of this bill is arriving tonight. My understanding also is that he would like to request that this legislature consider overriding the governor's bill of this veto of 372. And my understanding also is that this bill passed by 10 members, and I'm hoping, Madam Speaker, we can keep those 10 members to support the override, and hopefully we can pick up a couple more votes to send the message that anyone who comes in contact with a child who's been suspected of being abused must have these things properly reported. Now, I supported this bill originally, when it was originally introduced. I even supported it during the heat of the controversy when the church came out and said that this law was not necessary because the priests were already required to make these reporting requirements. And I continue to support this bill on the mere basis that we must make sure that at any time someone comes in contact with a child, that there's been suspicion of child abuse, that these must be properly reported. And even more so, this morning, Madam Speaker, I rise and I stand up to support the override of this bill, even more so because of the governor's vetoed message. Now, I always like to give the governor the benefit of the doubt and try to glean from what his reasons are for vetoing the bills that he finds objectionable. But in this case, I call to your attention his veto message, which says that with the recent edict issued by the Vatican to comply with civil reporting laws, Senator B.J. Cruz introduced Bill 372 to amend 19GCA to require any persons who in the course of his employment, occupation, practice, or profession comes into contact with children to report child abuse or neglect. The governor goes on to say that the amendment includes individuals that do not work with children, such as sacristians, lecturers, eucharistic ministers, volunteers, caregivers. Now, I asked the governor if he's really serious about telling us that eucharistic ministers, volunteers, caregivers do not come in contact with children. And the governor further points out that the categories of individuals in the church have been elevated to a level similar to clergy when their participation in the church is related to the liturgical function. And then by virtue of their function, these individuals may be considered clergy members yet lack the requisite training to reasonably suspect child abuse or neglect. Now, this is where it's kinda perplexing. This is where we try to do some forensic analysis to determine what the real motivations are behind the governor not supporting the bill that we passed. And in this case, for the church to say that the law already covers this reporting requirement, then to say that they're clergy members who lack the requisite training to reasonably suspect child abuse, my interpretation of that, Madam Speaker, really is that these people are not covered. If the law says that anyone is required, anyone who comes in contact with children and in the course of his employment, occupation, practice, or profession comes in contact with children to report child abuse or neglect must make these reports accordingly. But yet, the governor argues that these individuals don't have the requisite training to reasonably suspect child abuse, really essentially, they're not covered. And so, when I spoke with the vice speaker about the veto bill, he said that the law does not cover these clergy persons, and that his bill is absolutely necessary to be perfectly clear that these particular groups of people who come in contact with children, or who even suspect child abuse or neglect by the clergy personnel of churches or other religious organizations, it must be duly reported. Now, I rise in support of this bill. I'm privileged to move this bill on behalf of the vice speaker. I understand he comes in tonight, and I'm hoping that if the governor is saying and mimicking exactly what the church's position is, that these individuals are already covered, I ask our body to consider what harm it would do then if we just made it perfectly clear that these are the individuals that we want to have the current law extend to. The current law requires teachers, and doctors, and nurses, and counselors, healthcare professionals, professionals in the educational system, anyone basically coming in contact with children to make these reporting requirements. And again, for the governor to say that the volunteers and caregivers do not come in contact with children, I find that very, very hard to believe. And on that basis alone, I move that we support the override, and I ask our colleagues to do the same.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. On that motion, then, Senator Guthert, you are recognized on the override of Bill 372.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do support the override. And the reason is very simple.
Is your mic on?
I do support the override, Madam Speaker. The reason is very simple. There's confusion in the community as to really who is covered, who's not covered. And I think this bill helps make it very clear. And I think it's important that we make it very clear. There is no harm in making it very clear. If anything, it helps to promote what we're all looking for, which is ensuring that all children feel safe. And those that we look upon as leaders, whether they're teachers, or ministers, or clergy members, et cetera, have a responsibility to report this information and make known this information to the authorities. So I think this is a good bill, and I think we should override the veto in order to protect children. It's interesting, the last paragraph in the governor's veto message says, he's vetoing this bill in order to protect children. I don't know where that comes from. It doesn't do that. It doesn't do that. Sort of, I don't know if that's reverse psychology, but the intent of the bill is to protect children. It does no harm. It helps our cause to protect the young. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Senator Guthridge, on the motion then for the override of 372 to be sent to the voting file, unless Senator Rispio, you want to close?
No.
Okay, so on that motion then, without any objections, so we're done. I think we've exhausted the list of overrides, so...
Madam Speaker?
Yes?
Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we suspend any further discussion or any other motions and proceed to the voting file for purposes of voting on the overrides.
Can we take a brief recess?
It's Frank's.
I think three. The clergy, the section three. Palacios is number 15. Number 15 is the police commander.
That's been vetoed, right?
Yeah.
What did you say? Did you discuss it?
He did. He moved it. He was the first one.
Item number 15, item number 13. Item number 14. Here, so I think it's four, 13, 14, 15, 16.
Are they coming? So what was the response?
I didn't see what happened.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Rispio, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I made a motion that we suspend discussion on the agenda. We're in motions. And now we're saying the House rules to proceed down to the voting file for purposes of voting on the overrides. I'd like to amend that motion to say that we've voted at, we recessed, but then we come back at 11:30 to vote.
No, we're going to continue with the other bills.
Oh, we are? Okay, so I withdraw my motion. I didn't know that.
Okay, so without any objection, the withdrawal of the motion, so ordered. I will, however, announce that on 11:30, we will be calling for the vote, and by that time, I will do a call of the House. All those absent would have to be brought in, and others, members who are present, the doors will be locked and you can't leave. Senator Rispio, you recognize then on a motion.
So moved, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, while we're in motions, I have a couple motions. First, to excuse Senator, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And also, I believe, Senator Tenorio, who's on his way to session, I believe. But I move that we excuse him as well. That's it, right?
When you excuse them, that excuses them as well from participation and even in voting.
Is he on island?
Only those off island, and only the Vice Speaker is off island.
So I just move for that the Vice Speaker be excused, and that that's been adopted.
Yes.
So my next motion, Madam Speaker, is that any resolution of congratulatory or condolence in nature be adopted by the body, and that the clerk and the legal counsel be asked to work with the sponsor in the formulation of such documents, and that every senator be a co-sponsor of these items.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, as you can see, there are, I believe, 18 items on the second reading file. My next motion is that if in the event we get to an item on the second reading file and the sponsor is not readily available because they need additional information or just for some odd reason, they're not ready to deliberate on their bill, I move that that bill be moved, not passed on file, but be set aside, and that you would be advised whether or not they're available, or when they're available, to deliberate on their bill. So it doesn't lose its place in the second reading file, rather it's just moved to the side.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And there are no other motions at this time, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. So we are in the second reading file, and I recognize the author of substitute bill number 149, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Sisus Masi, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that bill number 149-30COR, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Natural Resources, and Federal Foreign and Marketing Affairs be accepted.
It is already so, to be placed in the third reading file.
Be placed in the third reading files, and can I speak on the measure, Madam Speaker?
Yes, you may proceed.
Manana Sisus to you and to all my colleagues and to all the listening audience out there. I would like to first thank Senator Rory Rispio and his committee for working so diligently to bring this bill 149 out, 149 out, Madam Speaker. His committee has worked extremely hard to incorporate the input and information from all the contributors. They worked really, really hard, knowing that this bill has come a long way. So I'd like to extend my undunkulu na sisus masi to him and his committee for making sure that this bill is heard today. Madam Speaker, Bill 149 establishes the Guam Beverage Container Recycling Deposit Act, more simply called the Bottle Bill, as legislation for Guam. You know, now for decades, Guam's leaders have been attempting to reduce our use of the audit landfill. And as far back as I can remember, if I'm not mistaken, it was Senator Ernesto Espaldón, who was one of the initiators, who tried to pass a Bottle Bill legislation. We've also had folks like Senator Frank Camacho, Senator Mark Chorfer, Senator Vice Speaker, former Vice Speaker David Shimizu, and others. We have been attempting, Madam Speaker, to reduce our use of our audit landfill. The situation has become so critical that everyone knows here that we are now in receivership. GBB, the landfill receiver, is no longer accepting miracles, I mean, materials that can be recycled, and yet we, as a community, still do not have legislation in place to address this situation. As you know, GBB has signs out saying that they don't accept these kind of materials. We do have programs such as the IRecycle that have begun to address this critical issue and bring relief to our aluminum waste stream. And I want to thank the backers and the supporters of IRecycle. And I would especially like to thank Ms. Peggy Denny, the amazing woman who pretty much, Madam Speaker, singly, handily run that entire program. However, even with the best of intentions, not enough is being done here. Our island community still has a long way to go. We have a long road to travel in order to repair the damage we have done to our lands. Our island is still littered with aluminum, glass, plastic, and other materials that can be recovered and recycled, thereby reducing Guam's waste stream and our island's carbon footprint. This bill would further improve our island's environment and more significantly, improve our impact on the world's environment. However, Madam Speaker, this bill is not just an environmental issue. This bill 149 is also an economic issue. Residents will be proactively engaged in reducing the litter on our beaches, on our roadways, in our jungles, and other areas where people discard waste. This bill will also alleviate the burdens placed on the Tourism Attraction Fund and the tax dollars spent on removing and reducing litter. Madam Speaker, Bill 149 will help resolve tourist complaints about the state of our roadsites and our beaches. And you know, for many, many years, we've been talking about cleaning our island and as tourism is one of our economic drivers, you know that one of the major, major complaints is how our island has a lot of trash. Bill 149 supports tourism as Guam's leading financial industry. This bill 149 stimulates our economy. It will allow hundreds of entrepreneurs, young entrepreneurs, to enter into public-private partnerships while improving our environment, engaging as young entrepreneurs. The Bottle Bill is the first step for our students, our students will have toward jobs of the future. Madam Speaker, when I say jobs, I mean green jobs. Passing this bill will unleash incentives for individuals. If we create the opportunity, people will meet the need. As you know, and has been advocated by the University of Guam, UOG Green Army, the UOG Green Army, a group of innovative, proactive students will use the Bottle Bill to raise money. If the UOG Green Army collected 5% of the 79 million cans, and I say 79 million cans imported to Guam, they would raise close to $16,000, redeeming a meager 5% of the aluminum waste imported to Guam would allow them to do for the University of Guam and themselves without expending a single tax dollar. This bill creates, definitely creates opportunity that will be combined with the imagination of individuals through Guam, which will experience innovation. And we talk about thinking outside the box and being creative. This is a part of that innovation. I've introduced this version of Bill, this third version of Bill number 149, Madam Speaker, in June of 2009. However, however, Madam Speaker, as you personally know, and as some of my colleagues know, this Bottle Bill has been nearly eight years in the making. And as you know, when I first came in, my commitment to the island of Guam and cleaning Guam and making it healthier for our community, I attempted to do this in, back in the 27th Guam Legislature. Eight years since 2002, 2003. The first bill that I introduced, Madam Speaker, was Bill 124, and like I said, it was introduced in 2003. The second version, and it did pass, but it didn't get the muster to get signed into law. The second version of the Bottle Bill, which was Bill 244, was introduced in March of 2000, March 18th of 2008. And now, fast forward to the 30th Guam Legislature, the third and most current version of the Bottle Bill, is this one bill, 149, which was introduced on June of 2009. And I want to do an analogy of where it was back then and how we started it and where it is today. As written, Madam Speaker, the first bill, which was Bill 124, the deposit fee would be paid at the point-of-sale, which was the register. As it evolved in Bill 244, definitions and operating procedures were expanded. Generally, those two documents were very much similar to each other. But the evolution of Bill 244 to Bill 149 saw further elaborations to the definitions with the additions of the terms of the auditor, the commercial passenger vessel, the deposit beverage, the deposit beverage container, the deposit beverage distributor, the Scheat List, the Scheat, the list of approved containers, and wholesaler. Additionally, Madam Speaker, sections within this legislation have been made concise while simultaneously elaborating the operating procedures for each process described therein. Madam Speaker, significant changes are found in the remittance of deposit fees and the establish of audit requirements. In Bill 244, the consumer paid this five cents at the point-of-sale. In Bill 149, the deposit fee is paid... In Bill 149, the deposit fee is paid by the deposit beverage distributor. Management and financial audits will be conducted annually by the Office of the Public Auditor. Costs for the audit shall be reimbursed by the Beverage Container Recycling Deposit Fund. Madam Speaker, I want you and my colleagues to know that I'm very proud of the work that has been put into this piece of legislation. Many minds have met, have met during working sessions. Bill, this Bill 149 incorporates the inputs and efforts of many, many wonderful, brilliant individuals. We have worked with local recycling groups, environmental professionals from our very own Guam's Environmental Protection Agency, professionals from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the international environmental organizations, the Container Recycling Institute, which operates, as some of us know here, the www.bottlebill.org. This website monitors Bottle Bill legislation worldwide. And I'm proud to say that this bill will be on that website. We have received and included input from recycling companies, wholesalers, and of course, the military. We have discussed this bill with leaders from our neighboring islands who've implemented the Bottle Bill legislation on their islands. My previous attempts, Madam Speaker, have been met with some resistance, and when I say some, I mean with a lot of resistance in the past. One of the biggest challenges, Madam Speaker, has been to garner the support of the military. And I am glad to say after a lot of, I guess what they say, perseverance and patience and working really hard to moving this effort over, Bill 149 now has that support. I want you to know, Madam Speaker, that Rear Admiral Bouchong of the Joint Region Marianas has pledged to support this bill. This is huge, given that his predecessors were very resistant. Our chance to, events change in our community is now, and I say that because you and I know that even in the past, when we talked to the military, there was notice of Guam not being a part of a domestic military based installation, that it was considered an international destination, and that's why they didn't want to work with that. And I want you to know that this Bill 149 will be Guam's first real step toward being fully environmentally proactive and engaged as the, as an entire community. Madam Speaker, this bill will allow us to stay, to say that if we, that we, we as a community firmly support environmentally sound practices for our beautiful tropical paradise. And you know, I say that because this beautiful island, Guam, we've been so blessed with. Madam Speaker, this Bill 149 will enable Guam to embrace the benefits of recovering recyclable materials, such as aluminum, plastic, and eventually, and hopefully, we will incorporate glass. There are several benefits to recovering these materials. And Madam Speaker, even if we just addressed aluminum for this moment, then the benefits of recycling are still great. I talk about that because the benefits of recycling aluminum. Aluminum is the second most abundant metallic element in the earth's crust after silicon. It weighs about one-third as much as steel or copper. It is malleable, ductile, and easily machined and cast. It has excellent corrosion resistance and durability. Aluminum's use exceeds that of any other metal except for iron. It's importantly, it is important in virtually all segments of the world. When we talked, when we talk about economy, economy with uses in transportation, and a breakdown of that would be automobiles, airplanes, trucks, railways, marine vessels, et cetera. When we talk about packaging, we can look at examples of cans, foils, et cetera. When we talk about construction, we talk about windows, doors, sightings, and et cetera. When we talk about consumer durables, we talk about appliances, cooking utensils, and so on. When we talk about electrical transmission lines, we work with machinery and so much more, Madam Speaker. Aluminum recovery, this recycling effort has been a commonplace since the 1900s and has become a high profile, and well, it became a high profile in the 1960s when recycling of beverage cans vaulted in the public consciousness. And you know, Madam Speaker, even us, even me, as I can remember as a little child, we used to do a lot of recycling here on Guam. Madam Speaker, as I said earlier, Guam imports over 79 million, 79 million beverage cans annually, annually. And I'm telling you that that is over 2.2 million pounds of cans every year. And although a lot of these cans are recycled locally, most of the cans end up in the dump. The I Recycle program covers at best 10% of the 79 million aluminum beverage cans that Guam imports. Off that, of that, 90% of the 79 million are still not accounted for. Off of that. You know, Madam Speaker, and I say that, and of course, if anybody wants to look at any compiled data, I'd be more than welcome to share with you that locations that have volunteer recycling programs like I Recycle, but do not have Bottle Bill recycles less than 40% of their beverage containers. Madam Speaker, the figures that we have from the International Coastal Cleanup since 2003 cite that with, and I can go on, from 2003, we started at, with the plastics at 3,764. In 2009, we had 8,110. If we go to glass, we had 3,646. Fast forward to 2009, which was last year, we were already up to 8,751. When we look at cans today, at 2003, we were at 8,598. When we look at 2009, and 10,000, and the year 2010 is about to close, we are, we are up to 20,000, 21,351. And, and again, Madam Speaker, those are just the figures that were provided by, by the International Coastal Cleanup here. Even with the I Recycle program, the numbers have gone up each year in terms of the amount of waste recovered. This recovery only covers the expanse of beaches in Guam. This does not include our dump, our jungles, our homes, our road sites. I can even throw in there our parties, our fiestas. Last year, Madam Speaker, Hawaii's Bottle Bill program had a 79% return rate. California was up to 82%. Iowa was up to 86%. Australia, and I wanted to include Australia here because I just came from there, from the Pan Pacific Games, and everywhere I went, there was a breakdown of the recyclable distribution receptacles that were every sporting event, every venue that we went to, every restaurant, there were up to 84%. Madam Speaker, it is now 2010. And this is my push to fully institutionalize these efforts for Guam. Today, we have over, I want to say 11 to 16 states that have these Bottle Bills. And more than half of the population of the United States lives in areas in which container deposit programs are in effect. You know, from California to Hawaii, Iowa, Maine, Massachusetts, Michigan, New York, Oregon, Vermont. We have 13 provinces in Canada, and, and, and the list goes on there. When we look at Quebec, Ontario, but even more so, you know, on the list, like I said, 13 provinces in Canada. But in, in the other major white countries in the world, we have Canada, Australia, Austria, Barbados, Belgium, Canada, Denmark, Finland, Germany, Israel, Kiribati, Micronesia, even our own neighboring islands, Madam Speaker. The Netherlands, Norway, Sweden, Switzerland, and of course, the U.S. But you know what? I know that even Palau is still working on, on, on pushing their Bottle Bill efforts, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, this legislation further defines the goal for Guam's waste stream. These goals are modest, given that nationally and even worldwide, that the average reduction is is closer to 70 to 80%. And I say that this is just the average. With this legislation, Madam Speaker and my colleagues, we will see, we will definitely see a cleaner Guam, a greener Guam, and a healthier Guam. And you know, as President Barack Obama advocated for a one Guam, a one green Guam, what better way to start, Madam Speaker, than to look at this bill? Madam Speaker, this bill adds a new chapter, 44, to Title 10 of the Guam Code annotated to implement a beverage container recycling program, more commonly known as the Bottle Bill, to be administered by Guam's EPA. The bill also establishes a container recycling deposit fund, separate and apart from all our other funds within the government of Guam, and requires the confirmation of the voluntary cooperation of military commands with the program before the program can go into effect. And I know that concern again was brought up, and I said, it will not be effect. I knew we have provisions in place, but it must have the engagement with the military. Bill 149 also, Madam Speaker, adds a new subsection 76220 to Chapter 76, Article 2 of Title 11 GCA relative to the endorsement of Beverage Container Recycling Redemption Centers, and establishes effective dates of this section in this act. This legislation will define terms such as the beverage, beverage container deposits, again, deposits, beverage administrator, deposit fee, the S cheat, and provide a list of approved containers. You know, Madam Speaker, as we've been so many years, like I said, eight years in the making, at least for me, and, and, and here, letting you know that previous legislators in this body also attempted to do, to do this Bottle Bill, I want to share with you some of the support that it received, both locally and internationally. And one that comes to mind right now, even as I spoke to folks from DC, is that the Regional Administrator of U.S. EPA Jared Blummingfield wrote that he was in support of this Bottle Bill, stating that Bottle Bills can play a significant role in increasing community recycling rates and reducing the impacts of litter. Of course, again, I'm going to stress the point that the Joint Region Marianas Rear Admiral, Rear Admiral Bouchong, submitted a short statement saying that he wants to give his commitment to work toward the military's meaningful participation in this program. And he even said, if a bill was passed, it would be incumbent upon the military to engage. Bradley Donegan of Guam's EPA, who was the acting administrator when this bill was publicly heard, submitted written testimony and support, I mean, testimony and support. And he presented his oral statements, I'm sorry, and at that time, and I know today that even the administrator of Guam's EPA supports the efforts. Susan Collins, who is the Executive Director of the Recycling Institute in Culver City, California, wrote on behalf of her organization in full support of Bill 149. She stated in a letter that the container deposit programs achieve the highest recycling rates for beverage containers. Deposits, deposit laws reduce litter and create green jobs, and recycling saves energy, reduces greenhouse gas emissions. And you know, when we, when we hear folks from the mainland and the international arena, I also want to, to, you to know, Madam Speaker, that even here on Guam, as we work closely with our university, we had Helen Whippy, who was the Senior Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs at UOG, who wrote in behalf of the administration of the UOG, the faculty and the students, and she expressed her support of 149. And a whole group of the UOG's Green Army came to support their efforts. Dr. Karen Johnson, who was off-island at the time of the hearing, submitted an email message of support for this bill. Our own Mr. Tourism, Mr. Burden Pinkel. Mr. Burden Pinkel, who was here this morning, wanting to support, to share his support, stated that over so many states and territories support this legislation and that if litter, litter has prevented Guam, and he said this, that litter has prevented Guam from becoming a road-class tourist destination. And as a GBB Guam Visitors Bureau Board Member, he said that he encouraged the Bureau to also support the bill. And as a board member, he realizes that our tourism is our economic driver, and that he stood up to the challenge and said, I'm here to make that difference and, and support this effort. Barry Strattman, who wrote an article yesterday in the news, Letter to the Editor of the PDN, he said that he fully supported the bill, stating that a refundable deposit on all beverage containers makes perfect sense, given the island's longstanding trash crisis. He noted that the I Recycle program was great, although a good start had done little to reduce the trash flow. Using I Recycle, I Recycle figures, Mr. Strattman calculated that there is only 4.5% return rate for aluminum cans, and that was his own personal data compilation. And those who know Mr. Strattman, Bernie, he know that he's been near and dear to this issue for many, many decades. Vicky Geyer supported testimony in support of this bill. Her suggestions included having a third party verify the actual number of beverage containers brought into Guam, specifying the location for redemption centers. Her recommendations were to be at the mayor's office so that they could, so it will be inconvenient for consumers, and suggested the use of tokens rather than cash. The tokens could be then redeemed or used as cash. Linda Trado, a marine biology teacher at George Washington High School, and I know, if I'm not mistaken, is part of the marine mania, wrote that she would be off-island, but submitted data on the International Coastal Cleanup from 2002 to 2009, showing the number of plastics, glass, and aluminum cans recovered. So I thank her for her efforts and the team and the organization from GW, who continue to show their support. We have a constituent, James Stith, from Santa Rita, who sent an email in support. We have Lorraine Froman, who submitted her written testimony. And she decried the common practice of people who leave their trash behind wherever they go, and wrote that a deposit on beverage container would be an incentive for the people to not throw them out. She wrote that we have more trash than we can deal with, and hopes that Bill 149 will pass. Madam Speaker, as I move forward on the support, it's important to share with this body that, that in the many years that we in the many years that we've worked on that, that we continue to have gained support for this bill. We have a gentleman from Mingilau, Will Calori, who emailed me and said that he would not be able to attend at that time, but wanted to express his support for the bottle bill. And he said that he's seen it work in Hawaii, he's been there, and he says, you know what, if you implement it here on Guam, Guam will realize the benefits that it could get, and of course, have Guam become a clean community to be with. We had one constituent, all the way from Germany, her name was Maria Cottermeyer, and who said that as long as she can remember, in Germany, they have had a bottle bill there, and it works. She said it would benefit the island of Guam greatly. A constituent from Chalampago wrote that this is a long time in coming, and we should do everything we can to encourage recycling. Diana Valdez-Green, also of Chalampago, wrote in full support of the bill. Marilyn VanderWijde from Michigan wrote in support. She is a retired teacher who lives in Michigan, where the deposit amount is now up to ten cents. She said she knows of several people whose finance trips to Europe from the deposits they've received from picking up cans in parks or along their roadways, roadsides. Roger Church from Timouning wrote in support, and he said, as a science teacher, he favors such a bill to reduce litter and increase recycling. We had Christine from GIGO, who wrote in support and asked that that deposit be increased to ten cents and not five cents. We had a Robert Shamba from GIGO, who wrote in support of the bottle bill. He agreed that Guam's trash situation is growing worse, and the bottle bill is needed. He supports, too, a ten-cent deposit, and included several documents favoring a deposit higher than the five cents that has been included in this bill. Madam Speaker, verbally, and as I said earlier, members from UOG and the UOG Green Army Recycling Association of Guam and the Guam EPA testified and supported this bill. And as early as this morning, coming out of a meeting from UOG, they supported their efforts and said, you know, we hope that your bill gets to the voting file. The analysis of this bill will show that it has been introduced, there are pertinent definitions that we'll look at, and I know that some of my colleagues may have some concerns about them. So when we look at the definitions, some of the pertinent definitions, we look, beverage does not include items sold in non-liquid or frozen forms, or items for medicinal purposes. Beverage container is glass, high-density, polyethylene, metal, plastic bottle, can jar or carton, all less than sixty-four ounces. Deposit beverage excludes syrups, medical formulas, dietary supplements, frozen products, instant drink powders, broth, milk, and dairy products. Deposit beverage distributor is licensed in Guam to sell or distribute beverages, juices, et cetera, and recyclable products to a dealer in Guam, which includes any manufacturer who sells and imports and sells products to either consumers or retailers, also means wholesaler. Deposit fee is the amount added to the listed price of a product that consumer pays. No taxes on deposit fees for dealers. The S-G is unclaimed, non-redeemed monies that have been paid to the dealer during purchases. A list of approved containers is determined by the Board of the EPA. Section four-four-one-oh-six says that deposit beverage distributors shall remit on a monthly basis an amount equal to the deposit fee multiplied by the number of containers sold. Containers cannot be placed on a list of approved containers unless there is a process in place to recycle, reuse, convert to energy, or physically remove from Guam. The Board has the option to increase the deposit fee, and again, they may want to consider a ten-cent deposit or refund value, or of course, that doesn't stop our colleagues here from wanting to increase that amount here today. Section four-four-one-oh-seven will note that all the beverage distributors will register with Guam's EPA, and records will be confidential unless needed in court. Section, subsection four-four-one-oh-eight, the Beverage Container Recycling Deposit Fund, controlled by EPA, paid into, by the recycling deposit fees earns interest. Funds may only be used for reimbursements to the redemption centers, expenses related to administer the provisions, funding for the administrative audit and compliance activities associated with the collection and payment, educational and promotional activities. Section, subsection four-four-one-oh-nine, payout is four cents or eighty percent. Section, section four-four-one-one-zero, excuse me, says that audit done in two thousand and eleven, and every two years thereafter, auditor will be paid out of the Beverage Container Recycling Deposit Fund. Subsection four-four-one-one-one, anyone can open a redemption center with the approval, of course, with Guam Environmental Protection Agency and the Department of Revenue and Taxes. Refunds are based on the number of containers or weight. It must state what kind of recycling will be done. Subsections four-four-one-one-two, redemption centers don't have to accept broken, corroded, or dismembered containers, containers still have liquids or foreign material. Section four-four-one-one-three, deposit beverage distributors shall, on a monthly basis, remit an amount for deposits such as, such beverage containers payable to the Beverage Container Recycling Deposit Fund. Madam Speaker, I know that, I want, I have some time up here, but I know that this is important, because some of the concerns came up, some of my colleagues, so I'm just bringing it out, and I just have a couple of more sections to work with. The subsections four-four-one-one-four, redemption centers can claim reimbursements based on weight or number of items. Sections four-four-one-one-five, containers will say GU on them, except for refillable glass. Subsections four-four-one-one-six, dealers' responsibility to post info about locations on redemption centers. Subsections four-four-one-one-seven, reverse vending machines may be used, paid out appropriate refunds as coins or redeemable credit slips. Sections four-four-one-one-eight, the Board of EPA shall convene an advisory committee with members who are appointed to, by the Administrator of EPA. Members of the Board shall assess the impact of the consumers of the beverage container. The Boards may adopt the rules and recs regarding the items to be recycled, deposit fees and refund values, regulating redemption centers, establishes and revising appropriate forms and procedures to reimburse the centers. And again, section one-four-four-one-one-nine is the military's cooperation.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Speaker, I know, I'm not finished, and you know what, I've not spoken this long, and in the eight years of working on this, Madam Speaker, I just want to say that I will go past the different subsections to this date, but it just goes to show that there was many, many years, many months of working, many months and many years of working with this, working with a lot of the stakeholders, and I want you to know that, that it is important that I ask my colleagues to please, to please, look at this bill as a way to move forward, to move forward, to have a greener Guam, a cleaner Guam, a healthier Guam, and to know that this beautiful island paradise will be protected for generations to come. And if there's anyone who asks questions, I will go ahead and be open to that. And like I said earlier, there were concerns, and I said I'd go section by section, and now that you've given me the authority to stop, which is only fair, I mean, I've never had this before, and I want you to know that this was really, really important, because as we look for protection of our environment, there shouldn't be a timeline for that. But with that being said, I'd like to thank my colleagues who've come to support these efforts, and if I may, add an amendment on page eighteen. Subsection-
Senator, this is why, only because there was a motion earlier, that at eleven-thirty, I was supposed to do a call of the House, I didn't want to interrupt you, you were in a roll. I will still give you an opportunity, it's just that we do have that motion to go down to the voting file.
I promise it'll be one minute, because it will just change that one number on page eighteenth, and then add the sponsorship.
But you're also going to close.
I'll close.
Yes. No, no, I'm going to give you an opportunity to close.
Yes, yes.
But there are members who still, who would like to speak on the bill. Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was trying to say, is that you can do all the amendments and when you're going to close. So you have another opportunity to speak on maybe the other sections that you wanted to speak on.
But it's real easy.
I understand, it was eight years in the making, and I, and definitely, you can speak for all the eight years.
And I have seven more members I wanted to add on as co-sponsors to this bill.
And you can do that then on the closing, but the motion was to go down then to the voting file, our members have shown up, so.
Good job.
On the overlay. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
Just remember, we have eighteen items on the agenda.
The legislature is called to order. Every member is present, with the exception of one who is excused, who's off-island, Senator the Vice Speaker Cruz. We are in the third, we are in the voting file. Notwithstanding then the objections of Imaga La Hingua Han on the matter of vetoed bill number four-six-six-dash-thirty-COR, I ask the clerk to please read the bill.
Vetoked bill number four-six-six-dash-thirty-COR, amended on the floor, introduced by Adolph B. Palacios Sr., TC Ada V. Anthony Ada and others. And I amend sections seven-seven-one-zero-nine and seven-seven-one-one-two, and to repeal section seven-seven-one-one-zero of Chapter Seventy-Seven, Article One, Title Ten Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Chief of Police, the Deputy Chief of Police, and the Police Commander of the Guam Police Department.
Senator TC Ada.
Yes.
Senator VA Ada.
Yes.
Senator Agun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavell. Senator Cruz. Senator Espo Don. Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Respechio. Senator Tid agree. Senator Tenorio. Senator Tenorio.
Espo Don. He missed Espo Don, he passed.
On the matter of vetoed bill number four-six-six-dash-thirty, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga La Hingua Han, the votes are thirteen yea votes, one nay, and one excused absence. Vetoked bill number four-six-six-dash-thirty is duly overwritten by Imina Chentin and Leja Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga La Hingua Han on the matter of vetoed bill number
Four-three-eight.
Four-three-eight-dash-thirty, sorry. And I ask the clerk to read the bill.
Vetoked bill number four-thirty-eight-dash-thirty-COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by VC Panglinen, Tierra Munia Barnes, Judithie Wampat, EDD, and others.
others. An act to amend you subsections five, six, seven, and eight for section one three one zero nine A, chapter thirteen of title two Guam Code annotated relative to section thirty funds and other federal matters.
Roll call. Senators, we are voting four thirty eight. Senator T.C. Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Agun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Cavil? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen? Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Espaldon? Do you need an extra moment? Four thirty eight. Please continue with the vote, Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Senator Blas? Senator Tenorio?
Madam Speaker?
Yes.
I'd like to make, make a motion for the body to reconsider, reconsider my actions on this vote, on the bill.
You want to-
I would like to change the vote.
So you can just change it, you just change, make a-
Madam Speaker, I vote for the bill.
So they, it's changed, Senator Cavil's changed his vote too, yes. On the matter of vetoed bill number four thirty eight dash thirty, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan, bill number four three eight received fourteen yea votes, one excused absence, vetoed bill four three eight dash thirty is overwritten by Imina Centa and Leja Slaturn Guahan. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan on the matter of vetoed bill number one one seven C O R.
Vetoked bill number one one seven C O R is amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, and amended, introduced by V.C. Panglinen, T.C. Ada F.B., Agun Junior, and others, an act established program procurement guidelines and procedures relative to the contractual requirements of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand nine.
Roll call. Senator T.C. Ada?
No.
Senator V.A. Ada?
No.
Senator Agun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
No.
Senator Cavil?
No.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
No.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Aye.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titegri?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
On the matter of vetoed bill number one one seven dash thirty, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan, the votes are eight yeas, six nays, and one excused absence, vetoed bill one one seven has failed to receive the required votes for an override. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan on the matter of vetoed bill three seventy-two dash thirty.
Vetoked bill number three seventy-two dash thirty C O R substituted on the floor and amended, introduced by B.J. of Cruz, T.C. Ada, V. Anthony Ada, and others. An act to amend section one three two zero one B of Article Two, Chapter Thirteen, Title Nineteen of the Guam Code annotated relative to the reporting of suspected child abuse or neglect by clergy personnel of churches or other religious organizations.
Roll call. Senator T.C. Ada?
Yes.
Senator V.A. Ada?
Yes.
Senator Agun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
No.
Senator Cavil?
No.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Panglinen?
Yes.
Senator Respechio?
Yes.
Senator Titegri?
Aye.
Senator Tenorio?
No.
Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
Senator Agun? Senator Espaldon? Senator Titegri? Senator Espaldon? Senator Titegri? On the matter of vetoed bill number three seven two dash thirty, notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan, the votes are ten yea's, four nays, one excused absence, vetoed bill number three seventy-two dash thirty is overwritten by Imina Centa and Leja Slaturn Guahan. We've exhausted then the bills on the voting file, we will recess until two this afternoon and continue with substitute bill number one forty-nine, and as promised, Senator Munia Barnes, you would still have the floor. So we are in recess. Back in session, Senator Respechio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and congratulations on convincing the author of substitute bill one forty-nine to suspend discussion on this bill until, and spend that time working on these amendments, and that we move to the next bill, substitute bill number three eighty, and that as you committed to, you'll continuously check with the author to see where she's at with those amendments.
Yes.
So it doesn't lose its place.
No, it will not.
So I'm moved.
So I recognize then the author on substitu-, I mean, bill number three eighty L.S., Senator Titegri.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, Madam Speaker, I request this body to accept bill three eight zero into the third reading, second reading file, and I'd like to discuss the bill.
For, it's already been-
Third reading file, Madam Speaker, sorry.
Third reading, and you'd like to discuss it, you may continue then.
Madam Speaker, what the bill does is, the bill requires, where possible, the government agency posts their forms on the internet. Most government forms are, are online already. For example, the Department of Revenue, Taxation, and a few other agencies place its forms online at govguamdocs.com. Most election commission forms are online, for the exception of petition forms for nomination of candidates or creation of any initiative. Placing all forms on the website will save both the government of Guam and its clients' time and money. Currently, most government of Guam agencies already place their forms online, but bill three eighty dash thirty will ensure all forms, except carbon copy forms are placed online. This will mean lower reproduction expenses for the agencies and savings of time and fuel for most clients. Madam Speaker, the, as you know, that this bill is in, located in five GCA, chapter ten, and it pretty much mirrors everything on here. On page two, Madam Speaker, you'll notice that I've crossed out in line twenty-seven, moving to page three, carrying on to one, two, three, deleting these areas here. If you read the description of section ten on page two, you'll see that it describes the reports and programs and services and units, studies, publications, and it's kind of different, you know, colliding those with forms, you know, applications. So I basically struck that out and continued on and added thirteen to this section that specify in, in clear form that this is regarding applications of forms. Now, I do have a, an amendment that I would like to put here that, it's very, just very small, I think the, our attorney is looking at passing out that amendment, and it's just basically to add a blank after, on page three, line nine, section thirteen, all, and then we're, we're trying to find the correct language to put blank forms. The intention was not, of course, to put applications, that's already been filled out on the, on, online, Madam Speaker, it's just blank, blank forms. So-
Okay, thank, thank.
We are going to, we have that amendment coming through, and other than that, Madam Speaker, this is substituted by the Committee on Labor, Public Structure, Public Libraries, and Technology. So, being that said, there were some concerns on the judiciary side where there's basically some documents that are very sensitive and should not be posted on. So it adds on sixteen, page three, line sixteen, that it gives, within its rulemaking authority, determine which document shall be posted on its website, and the form and matter in which the documents are to be posted. And that's it, and I humbly ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So the, the amendment is then on page three, line nine, where it says section thirteen, all at the words blank application and other forms.
Forms, yes.
And then delete and applications. Yes, so that's on-
Um, actually, atomic part, no, this is basically links and, and results of audits that are already public information. I don't think it would necessarily be on, on line four, section eleven. Oh, line eleven. Oh, okay, okay. I, yes. To continuously, after the form. Okay.
It's, I will consider that technical, that legal counsel then will be able to, to make sure that it is consistent and it flows. Is Senator Respechio, are you, are you good with that?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
So then the amendment then would be on page three, line nine, which is section thirteen, where the, after the word all, at the words blank application and other forms, and then delete and applications and continue-
Yes, Madam Speaker.
-for services. And then in the other section that Senator Respechio was talking to on lines eleven and thirteen-
Eleven.
That it will, and seventeen, that those then will be technical, that legal counsel will be able then to make sure that they are consistent.
The word is blank before the word form.
Yes.
So on that amendment, without any objections, then so ordered. Thank you, Senator Titegri.
So on the motion then to place it, on the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Titegri on bill three eighty-one.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill three eight one, one moment, please. Okay, Madam Speaker, I humbly ask that this body accept bill three eight one dash thirty placement-
For placement, yeah.
Placement into the third reading file, and I would like to speak on the bill.
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, Madam Speaker, basically what the bill does in bill three eight one is, the bill that allows victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking to take reasonable leave from work, paid or unpaid, to take care of legal or lawful enforcement needs and obtain health care. Family members of victims may also take reasonable leave to help these victims, a daughter, a son, a parent, or spouse, to obtain treatment or seek help. You know, Madam Speaker, there's been many discussion with regards to this, and what we're trying to do here, Madam Speaker, is be, stay on track with what many of us are, are seeing in our, our community, and a high rate of it, and that's domestic violence. And many times, individuals who hold a job have no real security in leaving their job to take some time off to recover from something so devastating, not just domestic violence, but even in sexual assaults or even rape cases. And what this basically does is, it just broadens what currently is in law right now in federal law, which is the Federal Medical Leave Act. And thirteen other states have implemented to even broaden this area, and including specifying domestic violence as an area that has not been foreseen. As you know, Madam Speaker, the Federal Leave, Medical Leave Act basically governs over companies over fifty employees, but any companies below that do not have to comply. What we're doing here, Madam Speaker, is we're, we're not giving the ability for someone to continually get paid. It's on the discrepancy of the employer to give that person leave, and with pay or without pay. But what we, what we're trying to do here is to save this position of this employee because they were a victim. And many times, we find out that victims of these criminal acts are always the ones that get the short end of the deal. They almost look like they're the ones that are on trial. Many times, women do not even show up at court to testify on an individual who, she was raped, and then to, to face her perpetrator because she can't take leave in fear that she may lose her job. I'm sure, Madam Speaker, that the abuse of something like this, you know, an employee, employer would see that this is very traumatizing, probably not going to be any good at work, you know, coming into work. But also, it allows exemptions here, Madam Speaker, for the employer, the hardship that the employer may have by allowing an individual to take- "The employer will sustain undue hardship for the employee's absence. B, the request for leave is not communicated to the employer within a reasonable time under the circumstances, or the request leave is impractical, unreasonable, or unnecessary based on the facts that made known to the employer." Of course, like every bill, it should have some kind of teeth to it, and we've added that with civil penalties. Under the Department of Labor, may access civil penalties of up to $200 for each violation of this section. If the notice of violation was given to the employer and the department within six months of the occurrence, within six months, that's a reasonable time. Many of these victims go through years and years of never recovering from something so devastating to them. And what we can do, as this body can do, is to ensure that, let's, for the first time, be on the side of a victim and help them out to secure their livelihood. So, Madam Speaker, I humbly ask this body to consider what's, which is considered to be one of the highest rate of incidents here on our island, domestic violence. 13 other states have followed suit to expand what they have currently, which is the Federal Leave, Medical Leave Act. So, Madam Speaker, I humbly ask that we, we too follow suit and be an advocate for those who are victims. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Panglin, and you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to stand in support of the bill and give kudos to the author for stepping forward on presenting something like this. It's, it basically is a gap that exists in the enactment of the Federal Family Medical Leave Act that kind of left some people out in the cold. And, you know, some people may get the reaction that, here we go again, you know, extending benefits when it doesn't cost us anything in this body, and we don't understand. But I think, Madam Speaker, the majority of our employers are good employers, but, you know, just as in every Christmas, there's a Scrooge, we'll find somebody out there who really doesn't take care of their employees, who doesn't treat them, you know, and is empathetic and sympathetic to the, what they undergo. And it is, when those individuals are caught in that kind of situation, then they make decisions that may not be in their best personal health interests, but they will force themselves to go to work. And deterioration of the security, the individual's health occurs because they can't stop, take care of themselves, or take care of somebody that they love that is undergoing some trauma, without feeling insecure and without the stress of, if I stop and take care of my family member, or if I stop and take care of myself, I'm going to lose my job. And I think that when we find people in those vulnerable situations, then we have an obligation to provide them some sort of protection. And, and we're not trying to take money out of the employer's pocket and put it in the employee's pocket. We're trying to strike a balance here and understand that, really, most employers will take care of their employees and do take care of their employees, but when that situation occurs and the employee has no choice, they, for whatever circumstance, they find themselves in, in those situations, that, that they can have some small measure of security to go and take care of themselves and the people they love that have suffered some kind of trauma in some instance, and know that they can, that they're not jeopardizing everybody in their lives, their family, their other children, and so forth, by the threat of losing a job. And I, I think that this fills in that gap that's missing in the Federal Family Leave Act, and it does go forward and looks at the victim so that the victim can take care of themselves, that the victim is, is given the opportunity to seek the help they need in order to bring them back to as close to normal as they can in their lives and provide them a measure of economic security by saying, "Don't worry, you will have a measure of protection, of ensuring that you can continue to earn a living when you take care of yourself after suffering some tragic incident in your life. And you don't put yourself at risk, and you don't put your family at economic risk by doing so." And that benefits the victim, that benefits the victim's family, and in the long run, we will see that it also benefits the employers who adhere to these kind of socially responsible policy that I think makes for a better community and makes for a much more livable and sustainable community. So I stand in full support of the bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Panglin, on the motion, and the others? So on the motion then to place on the third reading file, without any objections, so Recognize Senator Palacios on bill 428.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that bill 428 be placed on the third reading file for purpose of discussion, and if I may give a brief.
Yes, you may proceed, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the sex offender registry program, of course, continues to evolve into a more improved system. Of course, Guam has been participating in this program for several years now. The Guam Sex Offender Registry, however, is in need of updating to be consistent with some of the new federal regulations and terms that have been implemented. And the criminal sexual conduct crime against persons are very serious problems, Madam Speaker. And many, many people who are convicted of these crimes, when they are released, continue to pose risk to some of the vulnerable members of our community, most specifically children. And it's been found through studies, Madam Speaker, that a sex offender crime experiences a high recidivism rate, and that no matter where they go, they, they seem to repeat the same criminal act. The unit, the United, the U.S. Department of Justice of the Sex Offender Sentencing, Monitoring, Apprehending, Registering, and Tracking, also known as SMART, conducted, concluded that Guam has not substantially implemented the Sex Offender Registration Notification Act. Noncompliance with the so-called SORNA may result with the reduction, in the reduction of 10% of federal funding from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And this is a grant, Madam Speaker, that provides the people of Guam about $1 million a year for criminal justice programs to the courts, judiciary, public safety, and maybe scholarships, I think, into the, into the justice systems. So Guam has been given an extension, actually, until July 27, 2011, to allow for consideration and adoption of this bill. At the time that Guam was notified of the, would have been expired, I guess, the, the time within, within which to comply, the former Attorney General, Alicia Lim Tiaku, started, had been working on this with the federal officials of the Department of Justice. And because of the work that they have done at that point so far, they were able to convince, of course, the Department, Department of Justice to give them an extension. So July 27 next year is the extended time. And the purpose of bill 428, Madam Speaker, is to bring the government of Guam into substantial compliance and with the Federal Sex Offender Registry Notification Act, again, also known as SORNA. And this, of course, of course, will ensure the continued, of course, federal funding. It is, it improves the monitoring of sex offenders through advanced networking with other jurisdictions, in first, in the criminal justice systems, through immigrations, and other areas where sex offenders might, you know, might, might be traveling and come in contact with other agencies. So there's a very improved networking of these agencies. The, with this improved capability, Guam, of course, would be better protected, and likewise, Guam, of course, would be able to network with other jurisdictions and share information on sex, registered sex offenders. For example, if a registered sex offender in the mainland were to travel to Guam, there's a requirement of notification to the immigration of 21 days in advance before the travel that the individual is traveling, and such information, of course, would be immediately transmitted to Guam Registry. The judiciary is the administrating authority of the Sex Offender Registry, Madam Speaker. So the notification process is very enhanced, and a lot of times, that, that is very crucial because the sex offender is very transient. These, these people are very transient, and they move from one jurisdiction to another, and so this is an improved notification process. Bill 428 then proposes to repeal and reenact chapter 89, Title IX of the Guam Code Antedited. The bill is the product of extended collaboration between the former Attorney General, Alicia Lim Tiaku, her staff, and officials from the U.S. Department of Justice. Actually, Madam Speaker, because it says repeal and reenact, there is really no wholesale changes, other, other than, it makes amendment on timeline for notification, I think, no longer than three days, such information should be in the registry, methods of notification has been improved, and updating of records. If bill 428 is to become law, Madam Speaker, it would make Guam the seventh jurisdiction in this country that would be in substantial compliance with the federal statute and regulations. And you asked me why so many are not in compliance and why only seven? It was brought to the, during the public hearing, that sometimes, for small counties and towns, it would be, it would be more expensive for them to maintain this, and they just rely, I guess, on the, let's say, the, the city or the capital or the state to, to do this. But because Guam is a, is a, is a single entity jurisdiction, I mean, we don't have the mills maintaining this and then they communicate with us, we collect all this information and maintain this information, so it's very simple and very easy for Guam to do it because it's a one, it's a single entity jurisdiction, and that's why it's convenient, actually, for us, and it is, it's not a burden. That is why not so many, actually, were able in the, in the mainland to participate in this, especially the smaller counties. So that was brought up to the public hearing. The Sex Offender Registry, so I ask my colleagues, please, if you can consider and, and support this, this is the, again, the product of hard work between Alicia Lim Tiaku and her staff, and who is now, of course, the, the U.S. Attorney and the staff from the Justice Department. And that's what I'd like to share with the, my colleagues today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Palacios on the motion, and recognize Senator Agun. Does anybody else would like to speak on the motion? Sergeant at Arms, can you please see if Senator Agun's next door? Senator Agun, you are recognized on the motion.
This is Marcela, Madam Speaker. I didn't understand, I think it's Senator Palacios. Madam Speaker, I, I would like to stand in support of this particular legislation. You know that it did go through the Committee on Judiciary in terms of consideration, and one of the challenges that we had presented at that point in time, and it was articulated by the sponsor of this legislation, that one of the questions that we posed was how many jurisdictions are indirectly compliant when the public hearing was held with the federal statutes and requirements? And the sponsor mentioned that seven jurisdictions nationwide, seven states, were indirectly compliant. But, you know, it was also mentioned that none of the entities had gotten perhaps penalized or a 10% assessment, which is the penalty for noncompliance. None of the jurisdictions had been imposed any of those penalties, only because there was the direct recognition, there was, there was an additional 20 to 25 that were in the process, inclusive of Guam, of updating their sexual registry. And in this particular case, Madam Speaker, I think the sponsor of the legislation articulated, really, the concept here very well. This is a product of not only the Office of the Attorney General, not only representatives from the judiciary of Guam, and a number of our law enforcement agencies, but also the inclusion of our federal counterparts in the district court or in the U.S. District Attorney's Office in terms of providing direct input. Because this is something that is not only necessary so that it's uniform across the board nationwide, but so that we can continue as a community to receive some of the federal funds that have already been allocated to our community over the course of past several years. So we certainly don't want to lose federal funds, but in the same token, we look at ultimately what is the benefit of adopting these particular provisions, and it's the protection of the victims out there and making sure that any adjustment in our laws, in our rules, on our, on our regulations, continue to focus on keeping the perpetrators or the alleged perpetrators out of reach in terms of the general community, but most importantly, taking care of the victims. And I believe that what you see here, although it's extensive in nature, Madam Speaker, it does reflect updating a number of the provisions that are required federally so that we can continue to receive some of the Edward Byrne Grants and perhaps any additional funding down the road. We look at this and we look at all of the efforts, and, you know, Madam Speaker, this, it reminds me of, of different agencies, obviously with the Health Committee, different agencies working collectively together to be able to update some of these provisions so that, in fact, it doesn't impact the federal coffers that are coming to Guam. And I think that we find ourselves in a situation here where not only is this provision going to be able to allow us to enact and update some of the codes, but most importantly, to support our community. And I think if you look at the collective efforts, you look at the testimony, you look at that transcription that is provided, it's very detailed in terms of what the general purpose is of this particular provision and why we really should update it so that, in fact, nationwide it's uniform and that we can communicate directly with other jurisdictions and look at what the statistics are as it applies to their jurisdictions as well as to Guam. So I certainly stand in support of this legislation, and I commend everyone who has contributed in the formulating, formulation of this over the course of the past several years, and I certainly hope that our colleagues would consider supporting it. This is Marcela, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Agun on the motion, Senator Panglin.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was just, I was reading through the bill, of course, and I had a question to the author, and maybe it's just a matter of construction, but I just wanted to be sure, so I'm wondering if I could pose my question and then get a response.
Okay, yes, you may go ahead and proceed, and then I will ask the, for the author.
Thank you. It, it's basically on page, on page 26 of the bill, and it's under biological samples. And number one says, and it goes to instances on which a person needs to provide a biological sample, and it says, "Every person convicted in the court of a criminal sexual conduct offense or a criminal offense against a victim who is a minor shall provide a biological sample to the Guam Police Department for DNA profile information typing upon conviction." Now, I was trying to go back and read it so that I can look at the construction of this section here. I'm wondering if, if, are we now saying that if a person gets convicted of a criminal offense against a victim who is a minor, even if that person does not commit a criminal act, sexual conduct act against the minor, let's say it's just for assault, let's say a person convict, gets convicted in the court for an assault on a minor, does that then require that individual to provide a biological sample? Or is it because this entire law is pertaining to the sex offender registry, are we... Or is it because this entire law is pertaining to the Sexual Offender Registry, are we assuming that that person is charged with a criminal sexual conduct offense? So, I just wasn't sure with just the construction of this and maybe the author might have a response to that.
Senator Palacios, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, I have the same thinking with the last speaker. I am not sure which one this is actually, the works of the A.G., but I can make a quick call and pass this, suspend discussion on this so that I can, I'll call Attorney Hinkle, I think she's the one that's really very involved in this. Okay, go ahead and then I'll get an answer and I'll just call now.
Yes, okay. I'll allow for that. But Senator Panglin, you still have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And the reason why I ask that question, Madam Speaker, is because I do remember in earlier discussion on this Criminal Sexual Conduct Registry, having that kind of a discussion in which, and at that time, the response I got, if I recall correctly, was, oh yeah, even if you don't get convicted of a criminal sexual conduct, if it's against a minor, you get put on the registry. Or there was some kind of quirk that, for me, at that time of the last updating of this Criminal Sexual Conduct Registry program and process and legislation, there was, I had some grave concerns because we are putting people on the registry where the crime really isn't even a sexual crime. And once you get on the registry, you can't get off. Basically, it's, you know, it's a scarlet letter. It's emblazoned upon your forehead and you will never get rid of it. And that, to me, was a little disconcerting because if I do recall correctly, at that time, the answer was, yes, if you're charged under this statute and even if it's not, and you don't get convicted, you get convicted of something else, but not of a criminal sexual conduct nature, you still get on the registry. And, you know, with the way that we have some of our laws now with regards to family violence and domestic violence, where the victim doesn't have to be the individual that brings forth and presses charges, that the police officer has the prerogative, the jurisdiction, the authority, to actually file charges on behalf of the victim, even if the victim doesn't want to file charges. And, you know, I was concerned about those kinds of discretionary authority within our legal system that may trap some of our members of our community who may not be falling very neatly into this criminal sexual conduct behavior and crimes committed against members of the vulnerable population in our community. And so, I was concerned about that. And so, I wanted to get that answered again because of this idea that I know in the past that the response I got was, yes, even if you didn't get convicted of a criminal sexual conduct, if you're charged under these statutes and so forth, you get put on there. And so, here now, are we now kind of just extending that a little further now and saying, yeah, even if it's not a criminal sexual conduct offense against a minor, we're gonna, even if it's just battery or abandonment or whatever, we're gonna have the authority to have you provide a biological sample. And there's no nexus, there's no relationship between the crime and what the intention is of the registry in terms of ensuring that we know where these perpetrators are who have a history and who, by their very nature, by their DNA constitution, even science and both social and scientific evidence have come about and just say that these people, it's not even a learned behavior. It's within the DNA construct that they behave in this fashion and they can't cure and it can't be cured. And that's why this was come about because our science leads us to believe more and more towards that evidence of this behavior of these types of individuals in our community. But I also didn't want to push us further and further along into kind of lumping everybody and allowing greater discretion to lump everybody in this, even if that crime is not under this statutes and under the behavior that we want to guard against and that we need to track and monitor and know where these people are so that we can ensure that the community is safe and protected from the deviant behavior that these people perpetrate upon members of our community. So, I know it's in there, it's gotta go. I'd just like to get some clarification on that and certainly thank the good author and my colleagues for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Panglin on the motion. Senator Tonietta.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make a very slight amendment on page seventeen, line five on III. It's the sexual contact with a minor, fourteen years of age or older, to be changed to younger.
Is everyone on the same page? Page seventeen, line five, and three small i's, sexual conduct with a minor, fourteen years of age or, and that is to delete older to younger. On that amendment, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just, I don't, I don't object to the amendment. I recognize that this was helped. My concern here is, and maybe the author can yield to this question, this is found on page seventeen.
Page seventeen?
Yeah.
Page seventeen, line five.
Line five, and maybe all other references to this throughout the body of this legislation. Why fourteen? I think that, you know, this may in some way cause some confusion with regards to local statute, with regards to the, what is defined as a minor, as the age of a minor. You know, my concern here is sexual contact with a minor, fourteen years of age, and you know, based on the, on the proposed amendment, is fourteen years of age or younger, why fourteen? Why not fifteen or why not sixteen? So, I...
Senator Palacios, do you yield to the question?
Yes. First, let me, if I may respond first to the first, to Senator Panglin, with respect to the...
We will.
Okay, okay.
Because since he has the floor and then I'll...
You know, Madam Speaker, the Attorney, Attorney Hinkle is coming right now from the A.G. But I understand, I understand that there is a provision within here where the same language, it says, person under the age of fourteen or younger. What page is that?
Page seventeen, line five. That's...
He's saying there's another section that says more... Where's I? How's that question pointed out? Page fourteen, line fifteen.
Again, the only person that can clarify this, page fourteen, line nineteen, sexual contact with a minor under age, under fourteen years of age or younger. And I think there's a typo on that, I would assume, but maybe Attorney Hinkle would clarify that when she gets out of here, consult with her right away.
Okay. And maybe, Madam Speaker, along those lines, I can ask the...
Second question, I think that the senator had also asked with the age and the local law also, whether it's consistent.
Right.
Only they can answer that and I'm sure that they look into that and understand that they're actually doing a parallel with the federal statute. So, if we can suspend discussion on that particular question.
For the purposes of moving this along, I, you know, like my good colleague from Baragada, since the attorney's en route and while she's en route, we can continue to move on to the discussion. I don't see how any changing, making a change in this language here will change any proportion of the bill. So, I would go ahead, ma'am, and yield too. Having that question asked and answered when the attorney's here.
Okay. That would be sufficient.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Are there any other then speakers? Senator Barnes, did you originally have your... No, that... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. But we won't be able to do that either because of the...
No, because if mine is to change it to fourteen years to younger, my question was fourteen years, not the younger.
Oh, okay, okay. I understand now. Okay, so then on the, on page seventeen, then line five, and to delete the word older and replace it with younger without any objections, and so order. And we would wait then for a response from the Attorney General on two other questions. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Barnes? Can someone please check? I think she just, over this way.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want the good author of the legislation to know that I support the intent of the bill. My only concern is if I could ask my question and maybe he could yield, is that if there was any provisions in the bill that included the electronic monitoring for sex offenders.
Senator Palacios, do you yield to a question?
If there was any, if there was any note, because the actual code as it exists today, there were two provisions from the previous legislature, myself in public law twenty-nine dash seventy-seven, and then a previous law, if I'm not mistaken, may have been from Senator Tenorio was twenty-nine oh seven, that had the inclusion of electronic monitoring of sex offenders. And I just don't see it in here and I could be mistaken. If he had, if there was nothing there, did he have any opposition of inserting it back in?
No, I mean, unless...
Let me, just a ten second, so I can show him the existing GCA.
Okay. We're gonna take a brief recess.
Yeah. Not because there were no provisions at all. It has a monitoring role with every life, whether they are a father or they're... They're limited in their title, just has local, but of course, we find a monitoring group, professional...
Because it doesn't...
There's a limitation as to their movement, that's the kind of electronic monitoring device, not the electronic monitoring by computer.
It's a web user, it's a person is true to...
May wear an electronic monitoring device.
Are we on a recess? And go and play?
Wireless networking and communications are in the transmission. Wireless networking, right? Because it is, it is, right?
Dark chocolate macadamia bean, dark chocolate macadamia bean.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Barnes, you still have the floor?
Munya Barnes.
Munya Barnes.
This is Massey.
Nina Rose Munya Barnes.
Thank you there, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank the good author for taking the time to look into this and seeking a counsel review on this. And I just want to say that, Madam Speaker, based on the answers given to me, and just to make it simple, that I ask that I move that we take the section of the current nine GCA subsection eighty-nine point one-two, I don't have my glasses, electronic monitoring of sex offenders, and add it to the end of the section of the bill, and then also to have legal counsel work that in and then the definition of what electronic monitoring device is. I haven't spoken, I just, I'm just, you know, based on...
That's...
It just says to section nine, it would read, just take subsection eight-nine point one-two of nine GCA, and put in the provisions on electronic monitoring of sex offenders, subsections A, B, C, D, and then add it to the end, and also the definition of what the electronic monitoring device is, the EMD. I don't have it, I'm just...
That is really very substantive, so, yes, very substantive. So, we really need to get copies of that amendment. Take a brief recess.
Geez. I need to get one, I need to get one to work and...
Good to add up.
Huh? One what?
Hold on.
You see, you don't have a problem, I mean, you've got a problem.
You can sit there with this great piece of paper.
For me?
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 So the section that you're talking about, you says three-eighty-nine point...
Subsection.
Twelve. But then here is...
Subsection, that's a subsection.
Oh, the subsection.
Subsection. It's, you know, the S-S, S double S? You know, it's fancy.
No, that...
Oh, it's nine GCA.
No, we're talking about three-eight-nine point one-two.
It's eight-nine point one-two.
Oh, that section, I'm sorry, eight-nine point two.
Subsection. Section, I mean.
So it's section eighty-nine point two.
Right.
Not just, not eighty-nine point eleven, then just...
No, it's eighty-nine point one-two.
On page twenty-two, and then the top portion of twenty-three.
And then what the definition is.
And...
Of electronic, which is, this shows the letter S, the highlighted copy that you have.
I, we don't...
Page five.
And page five, where does it, where does it start?
You know, S?
From the very to, no, no, from the very top of page five?
No, on page five, the letter S on the bottom.
Oh, S. Okay, sorry, mine is not highlighted. Okay, so it's S, electronic monitoring device.
And I gave, I gave copies to our colleagues.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so on, on that...
And I want to thank the good author.
On the amendment, without any objection, gentlemen? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator. So Senator Panglinen, were you able to get your question answered?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but it was answered. So on the motion then to place bill four-twenty-eight dash thirty to the third reading file without any objections, unless Senator Palacios, you wanted to close, I'm sorry, send it down to, on that motion then to send bill four-twenty-eight dash thirty to the third reading file without any objections, and so ordered, Senator Munya Barnes, I assured you that you've not lost your place for bill one-forty-nine, so you do have the floor.
Si, due, smasi, as Speaker, not Speaker, again, I want to thank my good colleague from Nima, who really took the extra amount and devoted it with me to address some of the concerns that you had in the bill and to make the changes, so I just wanted to save, uh, due, smasi, to the Senator to talk. So I have eight amendments, I have copies that have been passed out, or five amendments that I want to close. So the First Amendment, ladies and gentlemen, would be on page twelve, line ten.
Page fourteen?
Twelve.
Twelve, let me see. Well, we gotta look for that.
Can you hear me? Iluta des, page dosi.
Okay, page twelve, line ten.
And then, uh, section four-four-one-oh-three, H, of the bill to read, dealer, and then it means every person who engages in the sale of deposit beverages in deposit beverage containers to a consumer for the use or consumption of the premises. That's the First Amendment.
So you're going to delete the recyclable products?
Products.
And add the words deposit beverages in deposit beverage containers, and it will continue. Are there any objections to the amendment? They're being, so ordered.
The Second Amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page fourteen, to amend subsection L of the bill to read, and it says, deposit beverage distributor. We deleted the alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages, juices, flavored drinks, milk, coffee, tea, and water, and recyclable products, and it will read, deposit beverage distributor means a business, whether licensed in Guam or not, that engages in the sale or distribution of any and all deposit beverages as defined in section four-four-one-oh-three J in a deposit beverage container as defined in section four-four-one-oh-three K, and then to a dealer in Guam, including any manufacturer who engages in such sales and imports and sells such products to either or both consumers and retailers located on either or both federal and private property. Deposit beverage distributor also means a wholesaler.
On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Number tres, page eighteen, line fifteen.
Page what? Let me see, which one is that? Page what?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Line fifteen.
Page eighteen, line fifteen, yes.
Yeah, the board, to amend four-four-one-oh-five as follows, the board may adjust the deposit fees as provided in section four-four-one-oh-six of this chapter forty-four pursuant to the triple A administrative adjudication law, which is the triple A.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, that's the fourth, right? Fifth, fourth, now the fourth on page nineteen, amend subsection C of four-four-one-oh-four of the bill to read, and it says, the board, delete upon recommendation of the director, shall from time to time examine and may elect to increase either the deposit fees as provided in section four-four-one-oh-five of this act, or the percentage of the refund value returned to the redeemer as provided in sections four-four, in section four-four-one-oh-nine of this act, or both pursuant to the administrative adjudication law.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
The next one, Madam Speaker, is on page twenty-one, amend subsection four-four-one-oh-eight B of the bill to read, and it says, B, the beverage container recycling deposit fund shall be administered separate and apart from any other fund of the government and shall not be subject to any transfer authority of the governor or appropriation by the lever except as provided in this chapter forty-four. Any unencumbered funds remaining in the Bureau Beverage Container Recycling Fund at the end of each fiscal year shall remain in the font and be expended only for the purposes described in this section.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
On page twenty-four, line ten, amend section four-four-one-one-one C of the bill to read.
Page twenty-four, line ten.
Page twenty-four, line ten, everybody got that?
Page twenty-four, line ten, or twenty-four started, line ten, okay.
Twenty-five, line eight, twenty-four, line eight.
Yeah, because it'll change C.
To must.
Did you get that?
From must to will, okay.
That the order may, yeah, center from must to will except pursuant to the application of that redemption center. That's the inclusion. Am I reading it right? I'm sorry.
Yes. Delete must, add will, except, and add the words pursuant to the application of that redemption center.
Did you get it?
I got it. Just want to make sure that everybody's following along on the amendment. Are there any objections?
No objections.
No objections, so ordered.
Okay, now we move to page twenty-five, line eight, to amend section four-four-one-one-one F of the bill to read, and then, number one, delete all types of empty, and then it would read like this, Madam Speaker, except deposit beverage containers for which a deposit has been paid pursuant to section four-four-one-oh-four. And then on line two, it would take out the words either and/or a redeemable voucher, and it would read, pay to the redeemer the full refund value in cash for all deposit beverage containers.
Pay to the redeemer the full refund value in cash.
In cash.
For all deposit beverage containers. Senator Ada, you're recognized on that amendment.
On this amendment, I, you know, the one, the one concern that I really have is that these redemption centers are going to set up their, they're going to be authorized to set up their operations, and then they're going to use out of their own personal capital money to then redeem these recyclables that come in. And so if then he takes that, this invoice, and he goes to Guam EPA to redeem those, recoup back the money that he, that he used to redeem the recyclables, it's very likely that he's, he would have put out, let's say, a thousand dollars out of his pocket, he goes to EPA, and EPA says, sorry, we don't have any more money, just like the same case with our income taxes and our vendors, our vendors who provide services, and then when they send their invoice, we don't have any money. And so, I think maybe to save the redemption center operator from having to then put out money from his pocket to make this redemption, he probably, his role probably should really be limited to bring, accepting the recyclables, accounting for it, and then give the individual a voucher. Let him then go to EPA to get a redemption of that, to get a redemption on that voucher. But then what it does is it really saves that redemption center operator who most likely would be a small business operator, who really cannot be affording to be shelling out from his pocket money and then have to wait for a year or however long to redeem it. So I, I think I would like to make an amendment to the amendment to the effect that it should say, pay to the redeemer the full refund value by issuing a redeemable voucher that would be, that can be cashed in at the Guam, that can be cashed in by Guam EPA, or something to that effect. But that's my biggest hangup with this bill, is how do we protect that, that private redemption center operator from shelling out his money, and then, like many of our vendors, they use their money to buy services or materials, give it to the government, and then, you know, years later, they're still waiting to get paid. So I think that's probably the only way that we're going to get that redemption center operator, you know, get him off the hook from that, and have, the role that he plays is then to receive the recyclables and package it however he's to be packaged and whatnot.
We're going to take a brief recess for you to put together that amendment.
I have a problem with that. I know that it's, you know, you're, 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 and each time you hear, and you're saying, you're, you're, you're...
Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it's, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things.
then, um, put out money from his pocket to make this redemption, he probably, his role probably should really be limited to bring, accepting the recyclables, accounting for it, and then give the individual, uh, a voucher. Let him then go to EPA to get a redemption of that, um, to get a redemption on that voucher. But then what it does is it really saves that redemption center operator, who most likely would be a small business operator, who really cannot be affording to be shelling out from his pocket, uh, money, and then have to wait for a year or however long to redeem it. So, um, I, um, I think I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, to the effect that it should say pay to the redeemer the full refund value, um, by issuing a redeemable voucher that would be, uh, that can be cashed in at the Guam, uh, that can be cashed in by Guam EPA, or, or something to that effect. But, but that, that's my biggest hangup with this bill, is how do we protect that, that private redemption center operator from shelling out his money? And then, like many of our vendors, they use their money to buy services or materials, give it to the government, and then, you know, years later, they're still waiting to get paid. So, I, I think that's probably the only way that we're going to get that redemption center operator, um, you know, get him off the hook from that. And have, the role that he plays is then to receive the, uh, the recyclables and package it however he's to be packaged and whatnot.
We're going to take a brief recess for you to put together that amendment.
Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things. Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things. So, on page nineteen, line thirteen, I would just like to then move that the words convert to energy also be just deleted.
So, on page eighteen, starting with line two with the word should, that whole paragraph down, paragraph down to line nine, to be deleted.
Yes, of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things.
Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things.
Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things.
Of course, because the, first of all, the money is to be used for not just the redemption, huh? Yeah, I know, but it, but it's, but it's also going to be used for many other things. So, on page nineteen, line thirteen, I would just like to then move that the words convert to energy also be just deleted. So, on page eighteen, starting with line two with the word should, that whole paragraph down, paragraph down to line nine, to be deleted.
Yes.
On that amendment, no objection, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Well, those are the amendments, Madam, and, um, Madam Speaker, and that was, as part of my opening statement, if anyone else to, wishes to speak, or we're going to push this down, then, I'd like to, well, let me add the co-sponsors, then. Uh, I'd move to add, uh, yourself, Senator Frank Ogun is already on, you Speaker, my brother Frank Blas, Senator Rory Rispishu, who really, really worked hard on this with us, Senator Jimmy Espaldon, Tony Ada, Judy Guthertz, and Adolfo Pelashis.
Okay, on that, then, motion, then, to add the co-sponsors, Juan Pat Blas, Rispishu, Espaldon, Tony Ada, Guthertz, and Pelashis, on that, on that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
And then, so, on the motion, then, to send substitute bill number one forty-nine, COR, to the third reading file, Senator Panglinen, you're recognized. And then, Ogun.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have a couple of amendments. Um, the, number one, of course, I do want to commend the author and extend my support for the, uh, legislation before us. You know, this is really, um, it's not groundbreaking legislation in that, you know, it's something new and novel, but it certainly is groundbreaking with regards to what this body and this, this term of this legislature has really been able to tackle on substantive issues that affect our social, political, cultural, and now our environmental integrity of our community in terms of assisting this community in trying to build a sustainable future. And I think that this bottle bill is one of the linchpins of that effort, and will contribute greatly for the generation that will follow us on this beautiful island of ours. And, and it approaches it from, uh, a, a process and a program that is tried and true and works. I remember, uh, visiting Honolulu many times, as we all do, in transit to the United States for either visit family members, healthcare, um, you know, business trips. And most of us always tried to break up a trip, uh, in Honolulu to either visit more family or friends, or just to break up the, uh, the long flight for our own, uh, personal, uh, rest and relaxation. And I remember going to Honolulu, walking in the parks, looking at that community there prior to the bottle bill. And you will find, and I, I saw and found a huge difference in the appearance of the park, the indivi, uh, the, uh, the cleanliness of, of the parks, and, and, even their trash cans are cleaner, because people, and maybe it's a sad state that people rummage through the cans to get their deposits, uh, because of their economic condition of, you know, but, on the other hand, we're not only dis, uh, we're not destroying the environment and contributing to the degradation and speeding up the degradation of the environment, uh, in Hawaii, because we've seen, I have seen personally some great improvements in the appearance and the cleanliness of, um, the parks and the public areas there, uh, as it relates to looking at cans and bottles that usually, before, were overflowing in the parks. Now they're not there. Now the, the, the trash is even in the cans, and, and whatever's recyclable is being taken out. So, I know that if, if our neighbors can do it, this community can do it, and this is the way to do it, uh, with regards to, uh, putting this program in place. The other thing that makes me feel very comfortable in this is that even though we have a statement here about a cooperating effort with the military community, we, we received and were able to track down a couple of emails from, um, the EP, US EPA, and in those emails and the exchange, uh, the US EPA representative in communicating was very clear that when a local community implements a recyclable, environmentally friendly program by statute for deposits on bottles, that the military community in that jurisdiction is obligated to follow it, that there is no exemption built into, uh, uh, the military, uh, exempting them from following that local statute if it's, uh, passed in accordance with the local, uh, authorities. So, I'm very confident that, uh, we'll be able to move forward on this, even though we're here in this bill saying we're going to cooperate, I think the military has realized that they have no choice, and they'll be required to follow the law and follow the federal EPA standards, and how that impacts their practices when the practices, uh, are set by the local community. So, I'm, I'm very confident we'll move forward quickly on this, uh, with regards to ensuring that we coordinate and move forward with the military community on, on this deposit, uh, beverage, uh, bill. I do want to, um, make, uh, an amendment on, on page eighteen, Madam Speaker, um, starting at line two, uh, the last two words that should, ah, and it says, should a facility or facilities employing combustion of solid waste and refuse derived fuel with energy recovery waste-to-energy incinerator become operational in Guam as a component of an approved comprehensive plan, then that waste reduction goal shall be increased by additional five percent beginning in the first full. I'd like, just like to strike that, our integrated solid waste management plan does not allow for incineration waste-to-energy, uh, program. So, I would just separate this deposit from this waste-to-energy, they're two completely different, that's why we're, we're recycling them, because we don't want to burn it. So now we're saying, but let's burn it, or let's allow it to be burned. So, I would just like to be consistent with our integrated solid waste management plan, uh, as it relates to, um, incineration, Madam Speaker, and move that, uh, that, uh, those words from line two, beginning with should, to line nine, ending with operation, be deleted, on page eighteen.
So, on page eighteen, starting with line two with the word should, that whole paragraph down, paragraph down to line nine, to be deleted.
Yes.
On that amendment, no objection, so ordered.
And then, on page nineteen, Madam Speaker, and line thirteen, um, I would just like to then move that the words convert to energy also be just deleted.
Page nineteen, line thirteen.
Right.
Remove convert to energy. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much. And once again, Madam Speaker, I do want to, uh, reiterate, um, my support for this bill, um, and of course, my, um, accolades to the author for her perseverance in, in moving and, uh, forward on this bill. Uh, you know, many times it was, uh, one step forward, two steps back, uh, because of trying to get the community to support it, get the stakeholders to understand it, uh, convince people that it is a good thing, that it doesn't take money out of their pocket, but it can have the possibility of putting some money back. But much more importantly, it helps us in our development of our community, uh, ensure the environmental integrity of our community, and, uh, development in a sustainable and economically and ecologically friendly, uh, policy. And I think this is, uh, goes a long ways towards contributing to that, uh, objective and that vision and that goal for our community. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Ogun, you're recognized on the motion.
This is Marcella, Madam Speaker. I did anticipate to move, you, you, my son, you know, this, ala cinco.
Gutman.
Whereas I guess that's a, that's a hint that in fact I need to make this as brief as possible, but Madam Speaker, this is, I certainly would like to stand not only in support of this legislation, but most especially to recognize the sponsor of this legislation for continuing to pers, be persistent in this process. I think that when we look at the bottle bill, I remember there was another Ogun that sat in this legislative body, maybe about sixteen, seventeen years ago, and he had introduced, obviously, his uncle, my former Senator John Ogun, and he had introduced a bottle bill at that time. So it gives you a little bit of history in terms of the nature of this concept, and trying to get it through this body, and get a particular provision that would be acceptable to all of the members, and be acceptable to members of the community, especially the business sector. I want to also recognize, uh, some, a number of the business representatives and businessmen and women out there who have stepped forward and who have allowed this process to proceed, because there was a little bit of hesitancy over the course of the last several years in terms of getting a bottle bill through. And the reason being is because of the concept or many individuals purchasing their liquor or their, their beverages in the base facilities. And that's a reality. People in the business community here in our private sector wanted to ensure or get some sense of assurance that the military community is going to participate in this bottle bill process. And the idea there is to not divert all of their business activity from the local community to within the facilities, within the base, the different bases on island. And by virtue of the persistence of the sponsor of this legislation, she was able to get some sense of assurance from representatives from the Department of Defense to allow this process to proceed, and that they will work with the local community counterpart so that in fact we can have it properly implemented. And I think that that's a very big leap forward in terms of not only enacting a bottle bill, but with some of the statements that were made previously. What is the nature of this? Yes, for every beverage or every can of alcohol or bottle that's purchased, there will be a slight increase in the cost. But what would happen in that case? Right now, you're looking at five cents being assessed for every can and any, any bottle that is recyclable out there in the community, of which one penny will remain with the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, not only for the administration of the program, but also to push for environmentally clean programs to implement out there in the community so that we can continue to keep our island clean and beautiful. And then, an additional four cents, the remaining balance, would go to any individual out there that goes out there and collects a can, and collects a bottle, and wants to redeem it at one of these redemption centers. Madam Speaker, to a great extent, we are, by virtue of this legislation, if it's implemented accordingly, based on the provisions contained herein, we're establishing a mini industry on island, a mini industry where we're getting a lot of our people to directly participate in keeping Guam beautiful, and also to make a good four cents on every can or every bottle that they recycle and they bring to the redemption center. And that can translate into a lot, Madam Speaker, and that's why I, I stand here, not only in full support of this legislation, but recognizing the impact that it would have on our community, keeping Guam beautiful, keeping Guam clean, encouraging recycling here in our community, allowing the military community to also partner in this process so that in fact the entire community, the one Guam concept is applied with the bottle bill, but also just as importantly, it could create a mini industry on island so that in fact many of our younger generation and many of our people can go out and actively, actively participate in recycling activities. We know that perhaps Guam is one of the communities out here in the Western Pacific that really enjoys social gatherings. And during these social gatherings, there's a lot of disposition or disposal of cans and bottles that could otherwise be recycled, not sent to our, our dump or our sanitary landfill, and actually go on towards a recycling process so that in fact they can be applied elsewhere in terms of their usage. So that's really where I stand in support of this, Madam Speaker, in terms of looking at what the ultimate benefits will be. It will help perhaps some of the students out there generate some revenues. You know, when there was a particular situation, I believe it was not last summer, but in two thousand and nine, where there were a number of schools and students that actively participated in a recycling program. And as a result of that, it was acknowledged that if in fact, based on by statute for deposits on bottles, that the military community in that jurisdiction is obligated to follow it, that there is no exemption built into the military exempting them from following that local statute if it's passed in accordance with the local authorities. So I'm very confident that we'll be able to move forward on this. Even though we're here in this bill saying we're going to cooperate, I think the military has realized that they have no choice and they'll be required to follow the law and follow the federal EPA standards and how that impacts their practices when the practices are set by the local community. So I'm I'm very confident we'll move forward quickly on this with regards to ensuring that we coordinate and move forward with the military community on on this deposit uh, bu- beverage bill. I do want to make an amendment on on page eighteen, Madam Speaker. Starting at line two, the last two words that should, uh, and it says, should a facility or facilities employing combustion of solid waste and refuse derived fuel with energy recovery waste-to-energy incinerator become operational in Guam as a component of an approved comprehensive plan, then that waste reduction goal shall be increased by additional five percent beginning in the first full. I'd like just like to strike that our integrated solid waste management plan does not allow for incineration waste-to-energy program. So I would just separate this deposit from this waste-to-energy. They're too completely different. That's why we're we're recycling them because we don't want to burn it. So now we're saying, but but let's burn it or let's allow it to be burned. So I would just like to be consistent with our integrated solid waste management plan as it relates to incineration, Madam Speaker, and move that that those words from line two beginning with should to line nine ending with operation be deleted on page eighteen.
So on page eighteen, starting with line two with the word should, that whole paragraph down paragraph down to line nine to be deleted. On that amendment, no objection, so ordered.
And then on page nineteen, Madam Speaker, and line thirteen, I would just like to then move that the words convert to energy also be just deleted.
Page nineteen, line thirteen.
Right.
Remove convert to energy. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much. And once again, Madam Speaker, I do want to reiterate my support for this bill and of course, my accolades to the author for her perseverance in in moving and forward on this bill. You know, many times it was one step forward, two steps back because of trying to get the community to support it, get the stakeholders to understand it, convince people that it is a good thing, that it doesn't take money out of their pocket, but it can have the possibility of putting some money back. But much more importantly, it helps us in our development of our community ensure the environmental integrity of our community and development in a sustainable and economically and ecologically friendly policy. And I think this is goes a long ways towards contributing to that objective and that vision and that goal for our community. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Huggan, you're recognized on the motion.
This is Masile, Madam Speaker. I did on this it to more give you in my son on you know, it's a ala cinco. Whereas I guess that's a that's a hint that in fact I need to make this as brief as possible. But Madam Speaker, this is, I certainly would like to stand not only in support of this legislation, but most especially to recognize the sponsor of this legislation for continuing to be persistent in this process. I think that when we look at the bottle bill, I remember there was another Huggan that sat in this legislative body maybe about sixteen, seventeen years ago. And he had introduced, obviously his uncle, my former Senator John Huggan, and he had introduced a bottle bill at that time. So it gives you a little bit of history in terms of the nature of this concept and trying to get it through this body and get a particular provision that would be acceptable to all of the members and be acceptable to members of the community, especially the business sector. I want to also recognize some a number of the business representatives and businessmen and women out there who have stepped forward and who have allowed this process to proceed because there was a little bit of hesitancy over the course of the last several years in terms of getting a bottle bill through. And the reason being is because of the concept or many individuals purchasing their liquor or their their beverages in the base facilities. And that's a reality. People in the business community here in our private sector wanted to ensure or get some sense of assurance that the military community is going to participate in this bottle bill process. And the idea there is to not divert all of their business activity from the local community to within the facilities within the base, the different bases on island. And by virtue of the persistence of the sponsor of this legislation, she was able to get some sense of assurance from representatives from the Department of Defense to allow this process to proceed and that they will work with the local community counterpart so that in fact we can have it properly implemented. And I think that that's a very big leap forward in terms of not only enacting a bottle bill, but with some of the statements that were made previously. What is the nature of this? Yes, for every beverage or every can of alcohol or bottle that's purchased, there will be a slight increase in the cost. But what would happen in that case? Right now, you're looking at five cents being assessed for every can and any any bottle that is recyclable out there in the community, of which one penny will remain with the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, not only for the administration of the program, but also to push for environmentally clean programs to implement out there in the community so that we can continue to keep our island clean and beautiful. And then an additional four cents, the remaining balance, would go to any individual out there that goes out there and collects a can and collects a bottle and wants to redeem it at one of these redemption centers. Madam Speaker, to a great extent, we are, by virtue of this legislation, if it's implemented accordingly, based on the provisions contained herein, we're establishing a mini industry on island. A mini industry where we're getting a lot of our people to directly participate in keeping Guam beautiful and also to make a good four cents on every can or every bottle that they recycle and they bring to a redemption center. And that can translate into a lot, Madam Speaker. And that's why I I stand here not only in full support of this legislation, but recognizing the impact that it would have on our community, keeping Guam beautiful, keeping Guam clean, encouraging recycling here in our community, allowing the military community to also partner in this process so that in fact the entire community, the one Guam concept is applied with the bottle bill. But also, just as importantly, it could create a mini industry on island so that in fact many of our younger generation and many of our people can go out and actively actively participate in recycling activities. We know that perhaps Guam is one of the communities out here in the Western Pacific that really enjoys social gatherings. And during these social gatherings, there's a lot of disposition or disposal of cans and bottles that could otherwise be recycled, not sent to our our dump or our sanitary landfill and actually go on towards a recycling process so that in fact they can be applied elsewhere in terms of their usage. So that's really where I stand in support of this, Madam Speaker, in terms of looking at what the ultimate benefits will be. It will help perhaps some of the students out there generate some revenues. You know, when there was a particular situation, I believe it was not last summer, but in two thousand and nine, where there were a number of schools and students that actively participated in a recycling program. And as a result of that, it was acknowledged that if in fact, based on all the cans and all the bottles that they collected during the course of that entire program with a number of the schools, that if in fact five cents was assessed to every single school, that a number of the schools will be walking away with significant amounts of thousands of dollars to be able to reinvest in spending back in their school facility. And that is where this we can carry this concept and say it will work, it can work with the business community yielding and allowing at least strong consideration in terms of making our Guam community move in this direction. I think that in a year, actually in two years, that we will begin to see the true benefits of a bottle bill, taking some of those resources, beautifying our island, helping the younger generation generate revenues, giving them an incentive to be able to go out there and make a little bit of money so that they can spend it in whatever or however they would like to. And I think that that's very commendable and encourage the community to continue to support this concept and see what we can do to maximize the potential because beautifying island is invaluable to our entire island community. Thank you very much. This is Masile.
Thank you very much, Senator Huggan. On the motion, Senator Pelashis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just want to rise in support of this bill. And among the many good things that this bill proposes to achieve, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to name a few that the bill, of course, complements Guam's commitment, of course, to protect our environment and conserve the limited resources that we have through recycling and reuse. And it also reduces waste, which of course will contribute to a longer life of the landfill. And because of those things, because of recycling, reuse, and reduction in waste, of course, our community would be much cleaner and healthier. For those reasons, I support bill one forty nine. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Pelashis on the motion. Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, again.
Tina Rose.
Tina Rose.
This is truly going to be the rose today. But thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to close. I had a closing presentation now, but you know, my I I just want to thank everybody for taking the time who've shared in in helping the me make the necessary changes to strengthen this bill and making it so that some man's trash is others' treasures and making sure that a new economic resource will come in to our community. Madam Speaker, I just want to make one more amendment, if I can, before we move this bill down, is to amend page twenty one, line nineteen, amend subsection C of four, four, one, oh, five of the bill to read. And then it says, C, one eighty percent of the funds remitted to the beverage container recycling recycling deposit fund shall be used only for reimbursements to the redemption center of the amounts refunded to redeemers. And then to twenty percent of the funds remitted to the beverage container recycling deposit shall be used only for the following purposes. And then it has all the sub items there.
One, one moment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just got a copy.
You just got a copy.
So we're on there, C.
I was trying to save trees, Madam Speaker.
Christmas trees.
Yes.
Okay, so page twenty one, and I was going page nineteen.
Page twenty one, line nineteen.
Okay, so it's.
Dispenso lo.
So it's twenty one, C.
C.
Okay.
Ungan.
All right. Okay, and you're going to add eighty percent.
Yeah.
Okay, for the first one, eighty percent, and then delete.
The following purposes.
Following purposes.
Right.
All right, so make sure everybody's following first of all.
And then on two.
And then number two.
Twenty percent of the funds remitted to the beverage container recycling deposit shall be used only for the following purposes. And then it delineates that. I can read it if you want me to.
Twenty percent, no, because then that's everything else that's here.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Members, I want to make sure all of our members are following. Yes?
Okay.
I I'm looking for an if you're nodding your heads, then yes.
Ungan.
Ungan, okay. Toto ma like then, pues. Taza, objection. Taza, so it's our so ordered.
And and that, Madam Speaker, I I just want to thank my colleagues for giving me the best Christmas gift for sending this bill down. For sending this bill in advance, for sending this bill to the voting file because it truly has been eight years in the making. And you know, if we can truly see a realization of this, it would be a win-win for all the community. And again, as I stress, for a greener Guam, a cleaner Guam, and a more healthier Guam. And that's the best thing that we can give back to our people and our generations to come. Sizus Masin, Sizus Nbinidi C, Anzu Totos, and Merry Christmas. And I move that it go down to the voting file.
On the motion then to send substitute bill number one forty nine C O R to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Maole.
Okay. Uh, we still have a very hefty agenda. I really would like to start on time at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. So please be here. So we're going to recess until tomorrow at nine.